All right, let's call this meeting to order. All right, welcome to the February meeting of the Archillide School District Regular Board Meeting. We have a full agenda tonight. We have a Zoom link there for people who aren't able to be in person. We have moved, you know, for those of you who might be here to public comment, we've moved that to the middle of the meeting because we figured you'd like to see a little more of what really goes on here. So it's more a little down the agenda way, so that should give you some sense of what the work is and what goes on here at the district, at the board level. So we'll open the meeting with a roll call and tonight Jane is ably sitting in for Robin, who's home ill.
Don't listen to more of Robin.
I'm gonna assume quite ably for doing that duty, so thank you Jane. And so we'll open the meeting with the roll call, who's here?
Ms. May, present. Mr. Lynch?
Present.
Mr. Mackey?
Present.
Mrs. Schick? Aye. Mr. Taylor?
Present.
All right, we are here in order and now we're gonna open the meeting with a pledge. Legions of the flag there, flag there. Tim, would you leave some pledge?
Yes. My pledge, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're gonna need a motion to approve the agenda and can I just ask, when you do that, allow us the ability to move things as necessary. One thing in particular, I want to move up to a student representative to get that. You got a motion and a declaration.
Mr. President, I would like to motion that we accept the agenda as presented with the ability to move things around and possibly if this is go really to table something.
That's a motion and we need a second. All right. Motion second, any discussion? All right.
Mrs. Quinn? Aye. Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Mrs. Schick?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
All right, and we have minutes from both the regular meeting on January 11th and the special meeting we held on January 25th. And so we need a motion to approve those or any corrections or additions.
I'll move to a group of minutes as presented for January 11th regular meeting and January 25th special meeting.
Do you have a second?
I want to make a comment first about minor correction on the regular meeting. A vote that was taken on my being a liaison for the PCC that I could use my second in that place. Was it this way?
Is there a motion with that correction to the minutes?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, you got that correction. Any discussion? All right, let's call for the vote.
Mrs. Quinn? Aye. Mr. Mint?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Mrs. Schick? Aye. Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
All right, one item that we'd like to move up here fairly quickly is the, we asked for an additional possible application for a student representative on the board. I think we have one and if we could have Sean bring that forward, then we'd go ahead and take action on that, on that student and seat that student if that's everybody's liking.
Will they bring that student forward?
Yeah, and we have her application.
Yeah, you do have her application. Elizabeth Grace Grimes.
So you have our, thank you very much. Applying and stepping forward here, we've all had your application to read. So I'm just asking the board if they have any questions of Elizabeth. Anything you'd like to ask or anything you, granted in her application, you want to know more about.
I'd like to say that I was, your letter was compelling about what you thought could be addressed and improve the high school. Your ideas, thank you.
Can you just say to us, like, why is it worth your time to spend some evenings like this? Because it's a big commitment and we understand and appreciate that Jane has put in quite a bit of time. At least he didn't discourage anyone there, so why is it worth your time?
Because I love seeing my community come together and how people come together to just make their community better and the school better for all the students. And I just moved here from Louisiana and I love how different it is from being in the South. How amazing it is here.
Very good, thank you, thank you. So this is an action item, we have a motion going on and that would make you an official student representative on the board, so entertain that motion if you can do it.
Also, I'm gonna make the motion that we appoint Elizabeth Grace Grimes as a other high school representative to the school board. And this is through the unit of this year, the academic year.
Right, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll reply to that.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All right, let's have the vote.
Mrs. Quinn? Aye. Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Mrs. Schick? Aye. Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries, you're officially seated. Thank you again and we'll let you sit. Listen and learn and note that, anytime you have a question, you can raise that and it wasn't while we were just asking you to hear it or something. Or periodically as we need to open, we say, what's going on? What's going on here? All right, so back to the agenda. Now we have some celebrations here that, from the high school, Sean's gonna bring forward to us.
Excuse me, make technology work here. If I talk loud enough, do you hear what I'm saying? Are we okay? Great your voice. All right, very good. Well, thanks for letting us have the opportunity to share some of the things that are going on at the high school. Thought about, you know, all the different things we could probably share that, you know, that would be interesting. I want to start off by, gotta throw out some shout outs first. Last Friday, we had 20 kids go to Durango for the Skills USA District Competition. And 16 of those kids qualified for state. We had kids in CSI, welding, teamwork, cabinet making, carpentry, job interview. So 16 out of 20 kids are gonna be heading to state. We'll be working with Mike, sure I'll get there. And then just found out today, both James and Grace were districts FBLA. I caught Ms. Schweitzer in passing and I think she said 26 students qualified for state, because I saw that.
And it was a little bit disorganized, so there could be more.
She did tell me that also, so I'm glad you corroborated that story a little bit. She said they were a little bit disorganized and now most of the day, so that number could go up. But that's phenomenal, so obviously super proud of all those kids and the work they do. So the place I wanted to focus a little bit before I start, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Forrester, he's gonna share a little bit about a program that we started this year. We came to you guys for a new course approval last spring this time. And he's gonna give us kind of an update on how that's going. But I want to talk about concurrent enrollment. Number of years ago, you know, I did address the board, we were talking about some of the frustrations that come with concurrent enrollment. In some of the metro areas, concurrent enrollment, for those of you that don't understand what that is, that means students get a high school credit and a college credit at the same time. So it's a way for kids to get ahead on their post-secondary work at no cost to families. The district pays those costs. So for students, the more concurrent enrollment classes they can take in high school if they're heading to college, the less money it's gonna cost them because they can put these on a transcript and have these in their pocket. And I was frustrated a number of years ago in that our kids didn't have the same access as the kids in the metro areas that have that community college right next door or that college that's right in town. The kid can just go, you know, the second period, they go over to the college and they take a course that's paid for by the district. The thing that becomes problematic for us is, you know, as I talk about Pagosa being our little landlocked island, anything that we're gonna offer concurrent enrollment wise, we've gotta create ourselves. We've gotta figure out how to go offer that, because we don't have that community college presence right here in town. And the thing that made it difficult, and I didn't spell that correctly. The Higher Learning Commission, who accredits post-secondary institutions, they changed the rules a little bit on the concurrent enrollment game about eight years ago. And in order to teach concurrent enrollment, teachers had to have a master's degree in the content area or they had to have a master's degree with at least 18 hours, graduate hours in the content area. Because a high school teacher essentially becomes an adjunct professor for that college. So we have, what I felt were qualified teachers, but they didn't have the right master's degree to be able to teach the concurrent enrollment courses. So that became problematic for us and really limited what we could offer. So the only really thing we had was online. Online works very well for some kids, but doesn't work well for all kids. So that became problematic. So some things that have happened since then, I want to talk, I want to give a big shout out first to Mark Thompson, our guidance counselor at the high school. He just finished a three-year term and just got asked to do another three-year term on the Concurrent Enrollment Advisory Board for the state of Colorado. That's a legislative appointment, he's actually the assistant chair. And that board has two community college appointments, five from the Department of Higher Education, five appointments by the governor and four Colorado Department of Education appointments. He's appointed by the Colorado Department of Education. So Katie Anthes, our commissioner, has appointed Mark on that board and he's actually the only high school counselor in the state that's on that board. So that's put him, I mean, obviously in the know and working hard for rural districts and the things that we struggle with in the area of concurrent enrollment. And through that, you know, it's helped him build some equity with some of the leaders in higher ed and Colorado Department of Education. And so he has direct access to some of those folks. And it's been particularly helpful with a new grant that CDE came out with. It was called Expansion and Innovation Grant. So the full term is Concurrent Enrollment Expansion and Innovation Grant. So what that does, it's for rural districts from the Colorado Department of Education. He's applied for the grant and it's been successful, every year he's applied for it. But what that does is it actually pays rural secondary teachers to get their masters in their content area or if they've got their masters, it will pay for them to get their 18 hours in their content area. Teachers still have to do the work, they still have to get their master's degrees or get their 18 hours, but it's at no cost to those teachers. And because of that, a direct benefit to our kids. So with that grant, in 1920 was the first year of that grant, we had six teachers taking advantage of it. Three of those teachers were just needing to finish up a masters and then we had three that started. Last year, 2021, five teachers in that, so the three that started it finished their masters and we had two more that were starting and then just got the grant again. And we're projecting that we have about seven teachers that are interested. And as these teachers get interested, what that does is starts to allow us to expand our concurrent enrollment offerings. And our partner colleges right now, so as those teachers get their degrees, we've got our community college partners, we've got Pueblo Community College, Western Colorado University, that's a four-year college, Fort Lewis College is a four-year, Colorado State University, Pueblo's a four-year and Stan One College. So these are our post-secondary partners right now that kids are earning college credits from and some of those directly from our teachers. And I think this speaks volumes. When we talk about discrete registrations, if we go back to 1718, we only had 29 registrations. So we only, only 29, well, some of those kids did it in more than one class, but there were 29 credits awarded, college credits awarded in 1718. And you skip to 2122, this year we have 206 discrete registrations. So that is obviously something that we're excited about as far as leveling the playing field and trying to get, starting to get some traction on the ability for the kids in this community to get concurrent enrollment classes at the high school. Right now, the current in-person offerings, we can always reach out and do online classes and we do have kids that do that, but our current in-person offerings, we've got world literature, classics, contemporary literature, our senior speech and writing, English 099, our advanced 2D art class, technical math. I put college algebra with an asterisk right there because we actually had it set up with Public Community College. We had a model set up where they were actually gonna have a teacher virtual meet with our kids at the same time, so our kids would be in the same classroom, but they're scheduled in with one of our math teachers that can provide tutoring and help and help them through that. Friday before class started, got a call from PCC, their instructor backed out on us. So we had to scramble and luckily Western University, Western State University came through and provided us with a similar setup. So we've got kids in a math class with our math teacher that are still gonna get that college algebra class. Next year, because of master's degrees, we're gonna be able to add advanced 3D pottery hopefully, US history, political science, government and then hopefully physics. With the ultimate goal, you hear stories of some of these high schoolers in metro areas that graduate high school with high school diploma and an associate's degree at the same time. I would love for that opportunity to be true for the kids in this community also. So we're working towards that. Again, big thank you to Mark Thompson for helping us take that grant. And obviously, big thank you for our teachers and their willingness to put in the hours to get those master's degrees and postgraduate hours to be able to offer these to our kids. Questions on concurrent enrollment before, yes?
My quick, so teacher of teachers are concurrent enrollment, is that, is she compensating more? Or that, and is that being regular?
We did.
In their regular teaching order?
Right, we did, because it does require more work on that teacher to do that, there is a $20 per student stipend for those teachers would do that.
You can also move up the salary.
Yeah, as you get those courses, yes.
But you're also taking off more work teaching.
Yeah?
I just want to say, way to go and to, and to Mark. I just really quickly, a credit at Fort Lewis College costs $288, so your team is effectively saving almost $80 for families in the city if we've got 200 students taking those credits. So that's a really.
It is. Thank you.
Sean, from the secondary classes, it's definitely kids that look to more liberal arts schools that have to somewhat take those infinity of electives. Are you finding that in classes that you're offering are actually meeting the, like, the college next step needs? Have you done any type of work to see?
I don't have that data, to be honest with you. As far as being prepared, you mean?
No, I mean, again, you know, if you enter into, you know, a traditional kind of liberal arts college, right? You have to take, again, a gamut of electives, right? And so a lot of these listed can scratch that off. I just wondered if that is actually meeting the things of where those kids are actually selected to go to school.
Yeah.
And how you might extrapolate what else is needed for some of these students to get into some of those different areas. It's an amazing program. Again, somebody who worked at that college level for a while, it was always great to have kids with that foundation. They come into college with confidence, they come in with better critical thinking and responsiveness decision-making because they were getting that. So there is nothing short of amazing that you are offering this out to these high schoolers. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yeah, and so in some of these instances, like the community college calls it a guaranteed transfer. So there's an agreement in Colorado. It's not necessarily across state borders, but there's an agreement in Colorado on a guaranteed transfer. So if you take guaranteed transfer college algebra class, if you go to, you know, Colorado School of Mines might be different, but any of the other colleges, then you're guaranteed to have college algebra on your transcript when you go.
Is that levels to state other institutions or just to, or it's CC?
I think it's public. I think it's public. In Mark's experience, and if Mark was here, he'd speak to that. In his experience, we've not had, and I think, we've not had a student that got concurrent enrollment and went to college that didn't count towards, it might be an elective credit, but you still have to accumulate the credits anyway when you get there. So even if you might have to take, you know, a math class when you get to college again, you know, it will. And we try to give students some guidance too. If you're pursuing a math field when you go to college, you probably, you know, that college algebra, those colleges, if they're gonna give you a math degree, they're gonna want you to take all their math from them. So in those kinds of situations, but if you're not pursuing a math, you know, take that college algebra and save yourself some money when you get to college. All right? Thanks for sharing. Awesome, thank you, I'm super excited about that. That's been a, gone in my side for a number of years and I'm excited that we're making some progress. Mr. Forrester, Brandon's our four-language Spanish teacher. He's gonna share a little bit, we had a no-show tonight, but I won't hold it against you tomorrow.
Mr. Forrester, a quick clarification, so all the concurrent enrollment, just really for everybody's application, completely different than an advanced placement course?
Yeah.
AP courses are completely different than this and you do not get credit, college credit for non-classes.
So.
Except unless you take the test and you pass the test.
Yeah, thank you, and I actually, I forgot to mention that. The benefit of a concurrent enrollment is you do, you're guaranteed if you pass that, to have that credit on a transcript. Advanced placement, you have to take the advanced placement tests in May and based on your score will determine whether a college assigns you credit for it.
Your score and the college, it's just a lot harder to get.
Right, it is, yeah, for sure. Cool. Thank you.
So like Sean said, came to you guys last spring with wanting to get a class. So the way we've set it up, it's a native Spanish-speaking class. And so we're trying to call more to the Spanish-speaking community here in Pagosa. A lot of these kids that come in that speak fluent Spanish at home, but they don't read or write, they're kind of depriving themselves of the talent that they have. And so I really wanted to bring forth a class that gave them more opportunities to better themselves and give them a better platform as they go into the workforce. Just some quick info for you guys, so this is Employers Domestic International Four Language Needs. So the big five parts, these are kind of what's gonna be needed in the future. The Spanish need as you go forward. There was a study done by BBC CNN through the Shorts Insurance Group, said that your salaries annually can increase anywhere from 5% to 20%. It kind of goes from industry to industry, obviously if it's a medical field, your medical Spanish, you're gonna get higher paid annually. That shows the needs here domestically that we have as a nation. For the languages, most of it that is actually used, about half of it is actually used in the US. So it's not just having them come and have to do international cells, it's needed and required here. And this is what they reported, the languages that they needed. They needed Spanish speakers, 85% of them are needed. So this is where.
Sorry, Mr. Forrester, what are one of those percentages needed, 85%?
So these were the languages that businesses needed.
That they said they would need.
That they said they would need, yeah. So Spanish was by far the most of any of them. So I've kind of go through these quickly, just kind of wanted to talk a little bit more about what I intended the class to be. I had my student coming in, this is kind of where she was gonna talk a little bit, but 2060, you know, the number of Hispanics keeps rising and keeps growing in the US. And so this is kind of from census data that we have and what's projected to happen. But for me, the biggest thing is a lot of these kids that come into the high school, a lot of them tend to be, for lack of a better word, a little bit problematic because they're struggling with the language barrier that's there. But this platform and this class gives them something to be proud of. It's something that they already have. A lot of these kids speak fluent Spanish, but they've never sat down and looked at the grammar. They've never sat down and realized that this is something that they can better themselves with in this time in high school, prepare themselves as they go out to the work field. And Jititi, the student that was coming, she is currently working to be a vet, that's her goal. She wants to be a vet, she wants to get into veterinary science. And so I tried to take this class and build it so that every unit we have has a profession or a business component to it. So for example, what we're doing right now is we're doing administration and human resources. So they're just finishing up right now and turning in their resume in Spanish. So they had to create their own resume in Spanish. And what we were kind of talking about is anybody can apply for a job and when you fill in that stuff, you can say, yes, I'm bilingual in this. But if you apply for a job and you give them a resume in English and Spanish, right there, they know right away that, you know, number one, you're more valuable, number two, that you can touch more people out there and it's more of a resource for them. So the other half of it, so too, for me, we had to kind of offer it as native speakers and Spanish three. So I've got about 15 native speakers in class right now and about six that are non-native. And so what we're doing, and these are kids that I've kind of hand-selected that have done well in Spanish one and Spanish two. And so it's kind of a balancing act and a juggle for me because I can push my native speakers in one direction and then I kind of lose my non-natives. But in order to bring those non-natives, I kind of gotta slow down. And so it's kind of, I'm struggling right now just with that within the classroom. But that's kind of my job as a teacher, is to figure out how, what the pace needs to be. But it's been super interesting and I think the highlight of the class so far is we kind of did an information gap at partner activity where one person had information, they had to read it to the other. And so I partnered them up and did a lot of non-native speakers with native speakers. And it was fun to listen to the non-natives say, oh, yeah, I was following right along as they were talking and picking it up. But the biggest surprise was to the native Spanish speakers that said, these guys know a lot of Spanish. This is really interesting. And it kind of, for those native speakers, showed them what they needed, what tools they needed in order to kind of teach and explain in Spanish so that the non-natives understood. And so for me, I just really wanted to say thank you guys. It's really truly the biggest piece for me and having a chance. I taught this at another school that I was at. It's also a bridge that we can build between communities. It kind of gives these Spanish speakers in our school a bigger voice, them to kind of stand up and say, okay, this is what I'm struggling with. And for me personally as a teacher, and kind of being able to be a face for them to come and talk because a lot of times, they might have a problem with, you know, Mr. O'Donnell or with one of their other teachers and it just kind of, you know, it builds that trust so that we can go together and talk to the teacher. So it's been instrumental for me in the three years that I taught it before and being able to bring it here to Pagosa High School, it's just been, it's been a pleasure.
Have you opened statements and these students have been, you're quote problematic?
Right.
Have you noticed a decrease in potential behaviors due to a class like this?
I have, yes.
And have you been able to elevate that to administration? Or maybe again, using this as a bridge more school, district-wide to give voice and platform to those students?
I've spoken a little bit about it, Sean, when I first introduced it. I don't think we've really talked about it district-wide. But just, you know, one example I have is from my previous school. I had a science teacher who, for whatever reason, just couldn't get through to a student. And she came and talked to me and I was able to just go and say, you know, in life, when you get a job, you're gonna have that boss or that person you don't get along with. And so we kind of just sat down all three. And so I've seen it be effective, but I think right now, really in the stage, you know, and I've got some of those kids, I've got one today that I just, before I came here, found out that he kind of, when we took our 10-minute break, he was gone doing something else. So it's gonna be able, to me, to be able to kind of pull him aside and say. So it's gonna be able, to me, to be able to kind of pull him aside and say, hey, look, these are things that, you know, that we, that we need to do. So I think as we go forward with it, it will help out.
Can I have a quick question? So where are all the, the students coming from? Do they all live here? You're saying there's a whole bunch more Spanish. Where are they all coming from?
They're here in the community.
Oh, they just live here?
Yeah, they're here. Nobody, I have, so we have one transfer student that's from Spain, but due to the, the nature of her program, she's not allowed to take Spanish class. So it's all, it's all kids here in the community. And those were just kind of the ones that I, that I saw that were kind of just getting, I don't, I don't think they were getting left behind, but I don't think they put in as much effort because they didn't believe in themselves. And so this is more of a way to kind of instill some confidence in them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Forster.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, Lori? Thank you, Sean.
Right, yes.
Great stuff. Thank you. We're in the next section of the agenda. Thank you, Janet, thanks for coming tonight. Any, any comments from the student representatives? James, you take the lead there. What's, what's going on on your mind, anything?
No.
You did, you did say a little about FBLA, and say something again about how you do it.
Oh, um, I'm excited for FBLA. A lot of us, like we said, are going to state. I got third in business law and first in event planning. So the event planning was with two other people. So I did a group project and then a test on my own. Grace, you, you did too.
I got fourth place for general.
And so there was a lot of us representing Pagosa Strong, so that was exciting. And we're getting excited for state. I don't have too much more, other than I just wanted to say thank you for Miss Niñez for representing the school and taking the lead to just represent us while we try to find a superintendent. So thank you.
Great, thanks. Anything else from anyone on the board? Any themes you're a part of or any comments on?
The Sam on Pagosa's board takes a break in January, but my next meeting is on just next Wednesday, so I'll have a report.
I, I have talked to the town about, you know, the RDA, we're gonna take that seat. And so they'll let me know when the next meeting is, they have one right now. Right, so that, yes. Right, and Miss Niñez.
Good evening, everyone. I, I think that we're a little mislabeled because it says superintendent report, and I'm assistant superintendent at this point. But I'm happy to bring you comments and, and just an overview of the district. I am so pleased that we have a couple of members of our transportation department because I wanted to start off today with a, an exploration of the findings from the audit. We had an audit on January 4th. So, um, for Director Lori Manzanares had to come in over Christmas and get all the things in order, but we had an audit on January 4th. And our district was found to be in full compliance of operations. And so this is a, a big deal where they look at all the trainings and the, the documents and the licenses and all of that sort of thing. So we are in full compliance. Our next audit will be focused on vehicle maintenance and garage operations. And since we've had Director Manzanares and Mike keep us on a rotation of, of buying new vehicles and putting those in the rotation and retiring the old ones, feel pretty confident about that. So that is a great way to start off the 22-year. The next item that I wanted to talk about was the legislative update. And I have a PowerPoint that I am going to be able to show. Boom. Jane and I practiced. So we like to look at different upcoming legislation as the, the general session is in order, just to see what might impact our district and how we can go about advocating or lobbying for different things. This information comes from the Rural Alliance, and I will be a part of the Rural Alliance call starting tomorrow. And the Rural Alliance is a wonderful voice. Secretary Amtes participates in that, allows rural districts to kind of advocate for, for what they need and to find out how laws that are initiated will impact the rural districts. So I chose just a few bills to highlight. The para contribution, there was initially a direct distribution of 225 that was supposed to be put into para to kind of strengthen the para pool of money. That was not put in, so we have another, that was not put in in 2020. So now they're trying to make up for that by putting in 303 million in 2022. And so that will be a huge boost to the para retirement. Another bill to watch is the retirement service that allows people that have fully retired under para to come back into work in rural districts. This has been so valuable for some particular positions, especially bus drivers. And we've utilized this in the past. There is a bill talking about executive session, and what can be talked about executive session? In executive session, including a negotiation with a candidate. And this obviously hasn't passed yet, but it is on everyone's mind, not just.
Your turn.
Yes. There are two bills associated with student growth and education, educator evaluations. And I think all the principals will agree that there's a sweet spot where you want to be able to hold classrooms, grades, subject areas accountable for the growth and recognize when a teacher makes growth with a given population. But there's also a whole lot of factors that can often play into that. And so there needs to be a way to specifically measure the gross growth, but not penalize teachers that may be working with a disadvantaged population or maybe teaching a subject area that isn't measured. So that is one bill. And the other is, talks about the learning disruption that may happen as a result of a disaster. And, and how we had to put the whole growth model on hold over the last, after COVID was initially impacting scores, and able to address that through the state. So those are some things that we're keeping a look on.
Oh, I have a question about para, the prospective funding, that's 303 million. That's not been voted on yet, but.
Correct.
So is that in any way going to modify the increase? It's already supposed to be set in place, I believe, on prospective leave? That our employees have taken out of their paychecks, an increase to fund, or is this gonna help?
I think it's gonna help. You can, Mike can probably speak to this, but it's gonna offset other adjustments that may.
Probably shortfalls?
Yeah.
The, it was planned money two years ago. So the projections that para had made and percentages they had taken out of employees' pay and the school districts, assumed that would be done. It wasn't. It was late, and well, it was done because of the recession. And now they're just going back and hopefully it will avert future increases. That's how they're selling.
But for this year, it's supposed to be 1% increase?
It's going up a half a percent for, always in a half a percent for employers, starting in July.
That's, that's still substantial, yeah.
Yeah, and that was because they did a demographic study. And people are living longer, so they're paying out more. And people are retiring early, earlier, so they're collecting us. So that's, even though that was not an expected increase, their actual rural studies said that was necessary.
Do they project how long would that, that 1% have come to sign, or is it, do you have a building? How far out is that?
I know it's over 20 years.
Where, where, they, they, based on assumptions, the projections, deviation, solvency sound for that?
It's, well, they're hoping that they will be fully funded in the 20 to 30-year range. It's fully sound currently. But it doesn't have 100% of money necessary.
Sure. In partner meetings, we talked a little bit about the substitute status in the district. I wanted to give you an update on that. As of today, we had 21 teacher in classified absences. So that's looking across the whole district, all the different roles that we fill for the district. And at the height of January, when we were impacted by more COVID cases, we had 39 absences a day. So the pressure on the substitute system is a bit alleviated. That's not to say that it has been solved. We still had three unfilled slots today. But that is much, much better than, than days when we were dealing with close to 10 unfilled slots. We have put out a request for teachers to start filling out the, the online system that is referred to by nickname ASOP sooner. Many of those unfilled slots come with, wake up in the morning and a kiddo is sick or somebody's feeling ill that morning. And if we can get people to fill things out and even cancel that, that sub, we'll use that sub somewhere else. But that has been an initiative that I've seen some administrators use. We've reached out with social media and personal requests. We had one former sub swing by the office, and she said, tell Chris Hinger I was here today. And so, Chris, you got one. And so that, that, that personal touch does help in terms of recruiting subs. We have monthly training meetings where we walk potential substitutes through various protocols and, and safety procedures. But I've also developed a self-study protocol that substitutes that cannot make that time are able to use. And I've, I've been able to hand those out. And those include a state-sponsored, it's called Substitute Bootcamp. And it is a module that they take online that helps with orientation to procedures such as bloodborne pathogens and, you know, what, what to do with a class, and all sorts of different things. If a, a potential substitute completes that, goes through the licensing, licensing process for either a one, three, or five-year license, and then actually subs, only one day, they get reimbursed $300. And that's to help with any out-of-pocket expenses that may come with fingerprinting and that sort of thing. And to hook up, right? So we are pushing the Substitute Bootcamp. And we are, we are gathering more subs. We have another orientation scheduled for this week for potential subs.
Is that right? We're seeing sent items, I don't know, four. Recruiting them, but where are they, are they, that means they're starting them?
No, so the four that you're approving have finished their training, have finished their paperwork, cleared their background checks, and are starting to sub.
Okay.
Yeah. Last month, we also heard a comment about a speaker that was at the high school and a social media contest. And I, I asked Mr. O'Donnell to speak to that and to kind of clarify some misunderstandings there.
I do bet. So it pertained to the Sam on basic health and the, the kind of hundred-dollar contest, whatever they had going on. Obviously, I didn't know, I didn't know what was going on. So I, I needed to do some seek to understand myself. So I started with James. James, and I met, you know, after the board meeting that week. And he kind of helped me understand the context of it. And I encouraged him in the future to make sure to come let me know on situations like that. So that, you know, one, it's good to be in the know, two, that we can address it. And then obviously, I had to do some seek to understand with Youth Rise, which is not, it's, it's a part of Rise Above Violence. It's, it's a kind of a youth organization that's a stem of that. We do allow them to work with our kids. Their mission is, you know, it's, it's a 9th through 12th grade students who develop and implement peer-to-peer educational awareness activities that focus on violence prevention and mental health support, which I think is important, and we do, I think it does fill a, a niche at the high school. There are some kids that are very involved in that and, and do see the importance, and I, and I see the importance of it myself. The problem was they veered off of what their mission was. You know, they kind of stepped out of their lane on what Youth Rise was supposed to be. So when I was visiting with, obviously, the, the director of Youth Rise, they already made an agreement that, you know, I think they caught some wind of kind of some things that happened. And they already made the agreement that they would not do anything that's not within their, in their mission and vision. So they're gonna stay in the mental health support and helping kids with peer-to-peer, you know, violence prevention and things like that. For example, this month is Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. So that group, those kids have worked together to create a lot of different activities to bring awareness to the high school kids. We've had some activities at lunch and, you know, some red flags and green flags that are up in the hallways that, you know, these are red flags in a relationship. These are green flags, these are things that it's, it's healthy. And then I've also made it very, very clear that I've got to be in the know, you know. And so obviously, any activities this month have already been cleared by me. Posters they want to put up get cleared by me. And then if they're gonna bring a speaker in in any, any way, shape, or form, that's gonna be cleared through me also. So I think we're handled, and I, I feel a little better. I was really taken aback, obviously, when I, when I heard what had happened. So we'll do everything we can to let, not let that happen again.
Certain things there. The director of that club is a.
Youth Rise, his name is John Feinbrock is who that is. But they are, their parent organization is Rise Above Violence.
Not a school.
No, it's not a school organization.
The school allows that club to operate in the state. It's not a school club.
Right. Yeah. We allow them one month, one day a week to come in at lunch so those kids can meet. With busy schedules, sometimes it's hard for all kids to be involved in something like that. So that's why we've worked with them to allow that. But they're, I made it very clear that that's gonna end if we have this kind of stuff happening again, so.
Well, this type of, of organization coming into schools is not, it's not the only one, right? There's several examples of this that have happened in schools over time. So it's not the only.
No, right. Well, no, and, and aside from our, our school clubs also. We've got a lot of different clubs to juggle. Obviously, our kids are involved in a lot of things. So we want to try to space those out so kids can have the opportunity to be involved in, in a lot of different stuff.
Great. For sure. Thanks for that.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Donnell.
Mm-hmm.
I am, I can't believe I'm saying this, but I am so pleased to share some COVID news with you all. Um, I was, uh, participating in the San Juan Basin Policy meeting yesterday and things just have a different feel. And, um, if you look at the graph on the, um, projected, we are looking at, uh, the peak difference, or ten-day difference, January twentieth through the twenty-ninth. Within our school, uh, twenty-two student cases and fourteen staff cases. So a total of thirty-six cases. Um, now, in the last ten days, January thirtieth and February eighth, um, sixteen cases. So our numbers are definitely reflecting that of the county. You guys can see from the, um, the San Juan Basin, uh, graph of Archuleta that, uh, January was rough all the way around for the, for the county. Um, but that, uh, on February sixth, there were Euro cases reported. Um, this has been a heck of a, uh, management, uh, task. And I wanted to talk about our current COVID protocol, the protocols. I s, I spoke to those in the, um, papers this week. Um, we continue to encourage vaccinations and promote personal responsibility. We do not keep records of student or staff COVID vaccinations and we rely on the, um, direct communication of, of people to, if they need to. Rapid COVID testing is offered at the elementary, middle, and high with our nurses and health aides. We use the Binax nasal swab. And our nurses are available to speak with families regarding COVID-based questions every day. So, um, if you or someone you love has experienced COVID, there's often a, a, a need to talk through that with a nurse or a medical professional, and our nurses are doing a lot of that. Um, we do not do any testing without parent permission and that is kept on file. And for the school year, we do assist with contact tracing in the school. So we don't go into your home and say, "Who were you, um, next to?" But we do, um, have seating charts. We know who kids are sitting next to in their various classes and parents are not part of that. And the people that do all the work, uh, I would like to recognize our nurses, Rajinder Kalsa and Marty Barnes. Um, woo-hoo! Um, our health aides are Casey Rumberger and, uh, Randy Nagel. So scratch out that second. So health aides, Casey and Randy, and Marty Gorgeous, um, former teacher and served for three months as a substitute in the health, uh, in the health office. So these are folks that really have kept us running. Oh, wait, let me fix that, um.
I'm sending it to Marty.
Oh. Fantastic. Um, really, I do appreciate the, the amazing, um, work that they've been able to accomplish. And I wanted to end my, um, report just with, not only with this, this sort of feel-good COVID. I mean, we were all looking at each other on the screen yesterday and grinning like we haven't had this feeling in a while. But just the, um, normal, the normal tone that has invaded all of our campuses. Um, the middle school with their, their ski, snowboard trips. Um, San Juan Mountain School with skiing today. Um, the Ms., Ms. Belina got to take somebody to the hospital. That's always exciting. Um, high school has done amazing stuff with their extracurriculars, their clubs. Um, elementary is keeping up Destination Imagination Hundred Mile Club. We've had big assemblies. I mean, pe, kids loving on each other, teachers doing their, um, their, uh, dances. And, um, we continue to support our social emotional learning with additional training. And I can't, I can't end this unless I say congratulations to all our sports teams. We've done great, but, um, basketball, girls and boys both beat me, so.
Well, they're here, here.
Yeah.
Congratulations, all of you.
Laura, may I just add one little amazing thing to that? And that is our swim team, um, had a phenomenal showing at regionals. They were very close to sending a couple of swimmers to state. And that's pretty amazing when they didn't even have a swimming pool to swim in here.
Exactly.
So lots of grit and tenacity for our swim team.
Well, I can clarify that the extent of swimming they had was two-long trips a week to Durango where they were locked one hour of pool time. And still, there was, yeah, a couple of people who were like tens of seconds.
They swam a total of twenty-four hours all season, which, uh, in a regular season, we would have swum two-hundred hours.
Thank you to Ms. DeGuys and Ms. Miller. Congratulations.
Excellent, thank you. Very good. We're going to move on to district reports and Mike's.
Um, on board docs, there are three reports. Uh, there, the first two are statutorily required reports. One is a quarterly financial report. That looks at the revenues and expenses for the first half of the year. Just think about three or four comments on each of these reports. Uh, the revenues, in case you notice that there's a lot of money not collected yet for the general fund, that is normal because property taxes are generally received in March, April, and May. Property taxes are nine point three of the sixteen point three million dollars. So that's why that number is so high that we're still expecting that. The other is grants. On grants, CDE is just behind on getting things approved. On our pedo grants, they finally got approved last week, so we applied for reimbursement for some of those. On some of the ESSR grants, they haven't even been approved yet. So until they're officially approved, we can't ask for money. Although we can spend that because they have, uh, preliminary approval, but not final approval. On ex, on the expenditures, uh, we spent sixty, we have sixty percent of the balance remaining. Half the year gone, so we're looking in pretty good shape. Although for teachers, um, their salaries are accrued, so their salary is only like, this shows four months of their salary. Uh, because we pay, this report would show, uh, the expenses from September first through December and not for the next eight months, which are part of their this-year contract. So it's a bit off. That's only certain groups of employees. Uh, twelve-month employees get paid fifty-fifty. Principals get paid five to seven. So it's not, there's no easy way to describe it. But I do a cash flow projection every month and we're, uh, looking like we'll be okay. About what we budgeted for, and I'll talk about that, uh, that we talked about in the last board meeting. Uh, and the last page is simply a draft of representation of everything. The second required report is an investment report. Uh, investment rates are still low, although there's word that they're going to be increasing. I looked historically, um, going back the past twelve years to two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. The low point in that whole timeframe was before I got here in two thousand fourteen, fifteen. We raised thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. This year, we are anticipating a little over twenty thousand dollars. The high watermark was eighteen, nineteen, where we had two hundred and thirty-one thousand. So if rates increase again, our revenues will increase again. We did do some reorganizing of some of our investments. We moved a large part of money out of the Calo Trust investment pool where they are paying, uh, somewhere between five tenths, or five one-hundredths of a percent and nineteen one-hundredths of a percent. And moved that money to some CDs that are paying up to point nine-five percent. So the problem is CDs only pay, most of them semi-annually. So while we moved the money, we won't receive the revenue until June. So it won't reflect in this or the next investment report, but it will be by the end of the year.
How frequently does Calo Trust pay?
Uh, daily.
Daily.
A lot of these are relatively short-term, so as rates come up, do you move into?
I've kept things ladder sort of, so I've had some two, some three years, some three years. Didn't go out and do beyond that. I have some shorter things, but, uh.
We'll take advantage of it.
Yes.
It's like it'll be an interest rate increase here.
That is the, that is the hope. And the last page of the investment report shows graphically where our balances are. And moving money out of Calo Trust is actually a good thing because it, uh, balances our risk. You don't have such a large percentage of our money with one investment. Uh, the last thing I want to go over real quickly is, um, looking at some of the future financial issues that we're going to face. At the budget meeting, we adopted a general fund budget that had a very large deficit for this year. Reminder that deficit is using money that we didn't spend in the previous two years because of COVID. And the, the large majority of that deficit, it are in one-time expenses. So I'm not too worried about that. But there are a lot of unknowns on that rise. Uh, I tried to quantify those on this and had to make a number of assumptions. So the first assumption I made is we're going to leave enrollment constant. And we don't know what the state's going to give us for more money, so we're going to leave that constant for now. We don't know how much we'll give in raises each year. Uh, things we do know, um, para costs are going to increase. One percent for employees, one percent, or half a percent for employees, half a percent for employee, or, and that is almost a hundred thousand dollars combined total. Uh, we know that, uh, one thing that Dr. Kim and I have been trying to do, we looked at our salaries for certified staff for teachers. And our starting salary, uh, for a beginning teacher is forty-four thousand fifty dollars. That ranks fifteenth in the state out of a hundred and seventy-eight schools. It is higher than Tellurium. It is higher than Douglas County. It is higher than Jefferson County, Durango, Bayfield. Uh, so we are doing really well there. Where we fall down a little bit is in our, the top of our scale. Uh, although we are just about at the state average and we rank sixty-seven with the top of the scale for someone with a master's degree, forty years of, or forty credits beyond that and twenty-two years of experience is sixty-six thousand three hundred dollars. That ranks sixty-seven, largely because a lot of the other schools have twenty-five or thirty-year schedule. So what we, what we started this current year is increase any of the four or five master's degree columns one step every year. So those people can get more and more money and are, will be more competitive long-term. But that increase in the step for master's degree people, that's going to be thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars. The biggest cost that we're going to have next year is money that will flow to the charter school if they take, if they go up to their maximum and all those students come from the school district. If that happens, it's going to be over half a million dollars. Now, there are a lot of things on the positive side that we don't know. Uh, for instance, if we grow thirty additional students, if the legislature gives us two hundred dollars a student or more, which isn't only on those two, those thirty students, but it's on all of our existing students. So that's on over fifteen hundred students. And if the legislature decides to eliminate even just a third of the negative factor, the budget stabilization factor, those three assumptions, which are all very conservative from what's being discussed in Denver, create an additional million dollars of revenue for us each and every year. So we just have to be very careful and watch what the legislature does. Uh, because, and do some very good projecting on how many students we're going to have. This year, our projection was, I think, four kids over what we actually have. So we did a pretty good job this year. Just need to continue to do that and keep a close eye on the legislature, which is why Laura did that legislative review. Uh, but, and the other, the only other thing to keep on the radar is if we don't and we have a series of, a continuing series of deficit budgets, the bond rating agencies, you will see a pattern and could conceivably downgrade us. Right now, we have a double-A, three-grading. Double-A is like a very high level. It's not the highest, which is triple-A, but it's higher than a single-A. It's higher than all the Ps and Cs. So it's very good. If they downgrade us, it might not have any effect or it might have an effect. There's some research out there both ways. Uh, the state of Colorado has a, uh, program where they won't allow any school to not pay their bonds. So there's very little risk. But if there, if a downgrade happens and the people who would normally lend to us see that, said these people are spending too much money, then the interest rates could go up. And if we did a building project, whenever happened, that would happen, our rates, the, we're going to have to pay on those bonds could be higher. And if they're higher, then that's higher taxes for us. I'd rather make more money investments, great things to do.
Questions for, for Mike?
I'm quite wondering about if, if, if the BS factor is instituted, one-third, like a chunk of like a million for us?
Uh, the BS factor would be, one, one-third of what we're currently paying would be three hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
How about a thermal hole projection?
Yeah. Two seventy-three is the thirty kids. Three fourteen is the two hundred dollars per kid.
So the BS factor itself is.
Yes. Right now, it's over one point one million dollars. And we don't receive every year that the voters said we should as a min, as a minimum. And Darcy and her U D group are working hard to make that happen.
Right.
So I appreciate that.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? Excellent. Decision, it's, it's been I on all those important details. We have a ELL report?
So I'm going to turn our ELL report to our, um, ELL teacher. So this is the first time Ms. Asa Ansong has been able to present to the board. And, uh, first lines are part of the board packet, but I will also be projecting one.
I also have something else I'm going to pass out to you. Uh, this is a pamphlet with CDE about the seal of my literacy. And I wish I was following up on Brandon Forster's heels, but I am not. Um, are you in control of slides? So I'll show you. This is me, my next slide. Um, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on my credentials because I have a lot of things I'd like to cover right now. But if you have time or you would like to ask me additional questions after the meeting, feel free. Um, I have lived on four continents. I do have a bachelor's degree in linguistics, as well as a master's degree in T-Saw in art education, as well as a secondary, uh, English language arts endorsement, so. Um, I have some denominations because you hear CLDE, ELL, T-Saw, ESL. It goes on and on and on. They're all covered in there. Um, for the sake of, uh, argument right now, I'd like to just talk about, uh, ELL as English language learners, and I'll abbreviate it even more to EL for English learners. Um, I'm going to skip to our designation requirements for, uh, I'm going to skip to our designation requirements for, uh, students who are becoming or are looking at as prospective English language learners. We do, uh, evaluate them on a set of criteria. The criteria that we use are the home language survey. If they indicate that they speak another language on their home language survey, we scrutinize further on what those, uh, indicators might mean. So if they're using the language full-time at home, part of the time, some of the time, you know, a little English, a little, a lot more English, they toggle between both languages. Uh, those are some of the criteria for designating someone as an English language learner. Also, teacher recommendations, body of evidence. There's a lot of things that can create an evaluation for, uh, English language learners. They do take a screener. It's done by a, a consortium through the University of Wisconsin. It's called VIDA. We screen them using a, uh, computerized, um, assessment that, uh, assesses during, in speaking, listening, reading, and writing. So the four language domains. The designation terms, um, that you should probably be familiar with are NEP, non-English proficient. I think that's fairly self-explanatory. We don't really have to spend a lot of time on that. The one that's a little bit more, uh, elusive is the LEP status. Students that score in a certain range, um, can be designated as limited English proficient or LEPs. Those students, um, often can listen and speak very well. You would not know that they are bilingual or possibly that they struggle with reading and writing. But as Brandon was saying, some of the students that are, uh, entering into his heritage program have the listening and speaking skills but lack the reading and like writing skills. So our LEPs are a huge chunk of our program. FEP is kind of a, this gets into some technical stuff that can be kind of, you can read through the, the descriptions. We have monitored students. If they get exited out or they pass the minimum criteria for redesignation, they don't need, uh, an ELL class or intervention of any kind, then we put them in a monitored status. I check grades. I meet with students. I meet with teachers. I find out what the needs of the students are to make sure that they're, um, successful at exiting. So when they're exited, they get zero services or support. So some, uh, what we monitor for two years, we, the state requires that we look at, um, exiting as a two-year marker. So, um, the state likes to look at students for two years. We don't really do anything with that. It's just more of a, a designation to, to ban things, I suppose. Let's see. Uh, the last two on there are dual-served or twice-exceptional. Generally, we have students that are ELL and something else. ELL and gifted, ELL and on an IEP. There is a thrice-exceptional or, um, triply-served, but I've never seen it in my career and I could probably, uh, I would probably do cartwheels the day that happens because I'm going to be forward to it. The next screen. Um, I'd like to talk about this breakdown of ELLs. This is out of our pool of ELLs. In the district right now, I work at all, I work at four schools. I work at the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school, and I could potentially be working at San Juan Mountain School. This year, I have no one at San Juan Mountain School. Uh, that could change tomorrow. So, um, out of our students, we have about seventy active students who are in the NEP, LEP, or monitored status. And of those, these are the breakdowns. We have, uh, ten percent are NEPs, um, twenty-four percent are LEPs, six percent are monitored, and then we have some exit year one and two that are in there as well. They're a little bit bigger than the monitored, but worthy to note. FEL, um, which I didn't go over, is students who are completely exited. We're just looking at them. I look at them probably more than anyone else does. PDS are students, um, whose parents declined services for whatever reasons. And I'm not even going to go into what those reasons could be, but they don't want services for their students. Uh, we have the dual-served, and we only have three currently students in the district that are designated as gifted and talented. Um, I am making a concerted effort with our gifted and talented coordinator to change that.
Ansong, they're, PDS again, or they, they are identified and see all that.
They are identified.
But they are not receiving these services.
They're not receiving services because their parents declined services. That's the PDS part. I'm trying to simplify it so I don't get you guys bogged down with some of the jargon. All right, next one. So, uh, I did a snapshot. You guys can cross off this twenty-one, this, these two bottom parts right here. They are not relevant to the elementary school because they don't pull that kind of data. Right now, I'm going to go through everything. The elementary school does push-in services. Now, you have to remember, if I have seventy active kids, I have to come up with lesson plans for students in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, all the grades, every single grade, at every location. I am in so many different places and it's hard to keep up. I'm strongly advocating for another ELL person that could help and assist because it's overwhelming. Um, at the elementary school, we do push-in only. And push-in works really well for our LEPs, but not so much for our NEPs. They might, we need stronger language instruction, um, that's focused and, um, sheltered. Meaning that they have their own class and they have a pull-out system. That's my recommendation. Um, we have three students that are monolabel. So they only speak Spanish right now. We could have other, we do sometimes have other languages. We have three monolabel students at the elementary school who kind of swim every day. And, uh, that's a, a concern for me and it's hard to do push-in instruction for those students. Right now, we have four IPs and we're in the process for a fifth IP. So some of the, uh, students who are on IPs, I can't tell you there's a formula because it's different for every student. Some of the times I'm providing services, sometimes I'm doing consult with the sped instructors. It really depends on how that looks. We have two gifted and talented, and they're in a gifted and talented cohort right now at the elementary school. Very, very proud of that. Like I said, cross off the two bottoms. Um, the middle school is offering, um, three classes right now, an ELL, ELA class, a newcomers class, and a writing intervention class. So students who are still struggling despite getting ELL services or extra support who need, uh, extra writing help. We have three monolabels at the middle school. Um, I forgot to talk about the term SLIF on our definitions page, but, um, we have students that have limited or interrupted formal education. That's what SLIF stands for. We have a few students who are in this SLIF category who do not know how to read and write in any language. So, um, all right, we have two, I'm sorry, out of those monolabels. We have four IP, oh, sorry. Um, we have six IPs and, um, five are doing a tier-two intervention out of our, um, our ELL cohort right now. That would be the writing intervention. I looked at the, I pulled data on all of the students at the middle school and the high school, and I wanted to kind of highlight the need for ELL and the support that they need. During COVID, a lot of our, uh, bilinguals were at home and they were online. They were in their homes with families that do not speak English and they needed support. And it was very difficult to provide that support. Oftentimes, they fell behind because they were speaking their home language at home and their parents couldn't help them with their schoolwork. I looked at how many students are, how many ones and zeros total. So some, you know, you might have one student who's getting three ones or so many zeros. But at the middle school right now, of our ELL students, and these are exited students. These are not current or active students. I did not look at those. These are ones who should not be getting support anymore. They have twenty-one, um, ones in core content classes, and I only looked at core content. It would be much different if I looked at the broad scope. So that's math, science, English, social studies. We have forty-one zeros right now, exited kids who are not receiving support of any kind. At the high school, um, we don't have any ELL courses and, um, I'm working really hard to get that to change. Our support, my support for high school students is individual and it's difficult because everyone has different schedules. And I have a different schedule and I'm serving at all these schools. So it's very, really, really for the high school. And, um, if we get a monolabel at the high school, that could really change, be a game changer. So there's no newcomers or monolabels at the high school or at San Juan Mountain School. That's what's supposed to be their SJMS. Currently, there are no active students at San Juan Mountain School. So when I talk about, uh, active students, we're not talking about San Juan Mountain School. Um, in the first semester, uh, for exited ELLs at the high school, they have twenty-four ones and seventeen zeros in core content. That's a lot. And these are not the kids that are getting support right now. These are kids that we exited. We go to the next slide.
Can you say like, say you exited?
Exit means that they have passed the, the minimum requirements for achieving independence with the language. They should be able to navigate an English-only environment, perform all the tasks required with little support.
Okay, but what you're saying, among those who exited, so they, they kind of.
Yeah, those ones and zeros are only looking at the students who have already been exited.
What is a one?
A one is how we grade. So four would be an A, three.
It's grades, that's.
Yeah, grades.
How many total exited students are there at the high school?
Roughly, at the high school, I don't know.
Or, or the high school.
Totally, in the district right now, we have roughly seventy students that are exited.
For all three schools?
All three schools. Yeah. There's not many at the elementary school because of that, they're usually are still in transition. So.
I'm just trying to understand the context of the, that one, I need to.
Yeah.
Likewise, just to put it in perspective, the, the ones and zeros, the numbers are fine, but that's compared with seventy students. But how does that compare to the overall population of these particular students who are not, you know, you know, of course, there would be a certain percentage of ones and zeros as well. So it might be nice to compare and contrast, look at percentages.
I'd be happy to look into that for you. I didn't look at that. My universe is pretty small. I'm really busy.
That's your last slide.
Yeah, that's the only slide we have.
Could you go backwards a couple of slides? One more. Yeah, this one. Oh, go down the slide floor. Sorry. So, um, the CLDE certification instruction, most of the teachers are, oh, all teachers are supposed to be certified in CLDE instruction. And, um, I'm not sure if we're, if it achieved that with COVID in the, in the loop. I think everything got extended. So some of our teachers are learning the instruction techniques to implement them in their classrooms. This is something, this is a statewide initiative. It's not unique to our split district. But I thought it was worthy of, of talking about. The Department of Education, this is federal, and it was also reinforced by our local CD representative, said that we should, um, be offering students roughly forty-five minutes of, um, focused instruction per day. I don't know that I could achieve that with my current caseload. In fact, it's near impossible.
What, what is potentially need like, uh, backlash or legal ramifications for not serving the students appropriately?
I am not clear on that. I think Laura might have a better understanding of what the ramifications are.
So a lot of that focused instruction comes through their core content time. And what also is talking about the, um, culturally and linguistically, their, um, certification comes to, uh, core teachers. So we were looking at all their math, English, science, and history teachers needing that certification. But, um, in addition, we had been pulling out, um, kids at the secondary level and pushing in, um, when available, also at the elementary. But that, that forty-five minutes can come through their, uh, their core teacher.
If their teacher is, um, licensed. Which is required by the state and everyone has, like, there is a time.
It's, it's a process, like, with your next, um, recertification, one is supposed to demonstrate. And there are, um, online resources and, and various ways that people are, are giving that certification.
But that's kind of a hard thing to count, right? If you're saying that they're, so if their core teachers are CLD certified, which at some point, I've mentioned, may, may be a communication. But the, like, contact time of specific CLD practices in a classroom delivered to a student is like, kind of a hard thing to count, right? How would you?
So if we think of a, a two-and-a-half-hour literacy block at the elementary, that, um, one would consider that direct instruction comes.
Um, I broke down some of the information. The middle school students are, uh, fulfilling the forty-five-minute-per-day obligation. High school students are rarely receiving services. It's just very tricky when I have seven, there are seven active students that really need help and their schedules are all different. So I try and pop in when I can and where it's just.
Those are pull-out, pull-out services.
Um, that's me pushing into their classes. I try and push into their English classes as much as possible, but that's not always possible for me. And recently, Sean and I talked about working with students twice a week during advisory. And so that's one way we're trying to circumvent so I can get all the students in one room and discuss issues that they're having with school. And we have a lot of issues. I mean, like, students who don't know how to write essays properly and need a lot of extra support. So. The elementary school students are spread across seven classes and that has to do with, um, gifted and talented right now, um, as well. And I'm very supportive of that. But I really want to stress that, um, still, even if there were, everything was condensed into one classroom, that's five classes with different ELA times that I need to push into. And it's really difficult to meet the right place at the right time. Some are doing their ELA courses concurrently. Some are getting pulled out for Title I services, so I can't meet the students because they're getting extra support elsewhere for other things. So, um, the breakdown for the, currently we have, um, I'll basically do that on your own. I thought I'd talk about languages in this school district. The, I was going to do some graphing and I thought it was ridiculous because you get this with Spanish and then all these little tiny, um, bars for other languages. But we do have an interesting representation of languages. We have Spanish, Navajo, Hicaria, Thai, Ravi's, Mongolian, Chinese, and, uh, we should be having a Russian student next year. So that'll change, um, some dynamics as well. Um, and as you see, I passed out a sheet for the seal of bilingual literacy. There are currently something like almost fifty schools, uh, statewide, school districts statewide that offer the seal of bilingual literacy. What that shows is that students can read and write in both languages, English and their other language. You can see what the breakdowns are on, you know, the sheet that I passed out for, um, those criteria. I think it would behoove us, we're in a district where forty-seven percent of our student population is a minority. Of that, thirty-four percent of the students here are Latino. And they could benefit from having a seal of bilingual literacy to augment what Brandon was saying. There's job opportunities out there for bilinguals who can read and write in that language as well. So, um, I'm kind of pushing for that. Um, the demographics are kind of what I was talking about. Is that this is Archeletta County. Uh, our namesake is, um, Latino in origin. So, there is going to be a large population of Spanish-speaking individuals in our, uh, county. And we should really look at offering more for those students. It might encourage students to stay in school, be more successful, and have more cultural pride. Um, it's not to say that you can't do that in other languages. There are other language opportunities out there. But Spanish makes the most sense in our district right now. I think I've covered everything. Um, if you have any questions?
There's a lot to.
I know.
Take in there. You've done a enormous job.
Thank you.
Very good. Push things. Encourage you to keep it up. We hear you, what you're saying.
So we really want to serve those students who are, uh, you know, speaking another language. We, we, I need more, I need more help. All right, thank you.
All right, we have some discussion items, three items. First, if we have five strategic plan, there is more to talk about, very.
Yes. Um, exactly. And so, um, so I'm here to present the, you guys have had plenty of overviews of the strategic plan. And as, uh, a administrative team, our intention was to start, um, moving from the broad to more specific. We worked, uh, together, uh, last semester, at the beginning of the semester, to develop, um, sorry, eight target points. I'm going to share those with you today. I'm going to add.
I'm gonna share those with you today, I'm gonna ask if you have any input, and then we will be meeting with principals, uh, leadership team, uh, the, the leadership council, to try and, um, get more specific goals. But at this point, this, um, priority one has now morphed into eight, um, areas. The first three, um, are shared on the screen, and they talk about the profile of the graduate. So we are trying to work with the end goal in mind, that we don't want to, um, create work at any given level of education that doesn't contribute to that, uh, that graduate. And so, um, at the, at the end of the day, what do we want, what are the skills, the knowledge, the, the abilities we want our, our graduates to have? And, um, three specific goals that we have around there, that we will, um, develop the profile of graduate, we'll develop measurable outcomes, and each school will, each will work towards those measurable outcomes in, through their unified improvement plan. And all principals have, um, completed their unified improvement plan, and they are now submitted to the state for review. Um, the next two goals, um, you know, our, our priority is success for every student in every class and every day. We, um, want, wanted to, um, focus one of the goal on eliminating achievement gaps. We see that, um, both socio-economically and by, um, IEP designation, and, um, also by, um, language, uh, ability, that we are, we're getting some achievement gaps, and we wanted to, uh, address that in the goal. And we have a goal specifically around, uh, a six-twelve vision and building a CTE STEM pathway, and we'll, um, hear a little bit, uh, more about that later today. But, uh, we believe that that foundation is created in middle school, that vision is created, and it helps, and it builds through the secondary, uh, experience all the way to the end of high school.
So Laura, may I make a comment?
Sure.
If you're looking at the achievement gaps, and if you were to be, if you go back to say where we've earned resources, it seems pretty, I think, ELL needs more resources to support, and so it's on to contribute to know what the achievement gaps. Unless I'm missing something, it seems like...
That, that is, that is definitely one achievement gap, yes. And, um, we also, as we looked at, um, CMAS data, we were seeing that through socioeconomics also, so kids identified as very reduced lunch were not, uh, achieving at as high of levels as kids who weren't. And so that's something to consider. Um, kids with IEPs weren't, um, achieving, um, to the extent that kids who did have IEPs. So, yeah, those are three distinct achievement gaps that we want to be working on.
But the ideal amount of, of earning resources where we can achieve.
Exactly. Um, our last two goals that we developed as a leadership team, um, to support, and, and we did write this at a time when we all recognized that, uh, a lot of our kids have, um, some, uh, emotional, uh, learning challenges, and come to school bringing all of those, so we wanted to improve some of our social-emotional learning through the MTSS process. We have, um, pushed out resources through Project Aware and, um, continue to, to help build that. And, um, then our last goal that we wanted to work on and that we will be building out is, um, regarding high expectations and making sure that, um, that we're supporting, um, kids, but we're also, um, letting them know that we can, that we can achieve great things. So, at this point, I would definitely welcome any board input, or, or encourage you to email me that success for every student in every class every day might have a different, um, I don't know, resonate differently with you as board members, and, um, would be happy to engage and, and, um, apply your, your perspective to this.
Would each, would each school take these goals and then break them down in terms of, like, recent, what did the states achieve that?
Yes. I, we have a vision of a huge spreadsheet with...
Yeah, I have a spreadsheet.
With lots of, lots of smaller deliveries.
So at this stage of this, are, is there anything we would suggest to add or on, like, those goals? You're, you're gonna take them before you give them?
Yes, exactly.
So take, take that as an open invitation.
To, to communicate.
Wonder and contemplate. So that, this is all about bringing it to life, seeing the five priorities, talking about that, it's all, it's all good stuff, and then how do you activate that?
And not lose momentum, yes.
Alright, so then, are you ready to move?
Yes.
So we're gonna go to students here, settle about the school building and kind of the future of where that needs to go. You're skiing today, I hear?
I was, we, we had quite the adventure. Um, thank you, I, I didn't want to present any slides because I myself am not an engineer, shocker, and I don't want to propose anything that we might later, um, well, I'm, I'm just not gonna let them talk to me about it. I start to say we should put this here and that there. But with that said, Laura does have a visual of what we have now, if you would like to see that. But it's my understanding, we're more interested in the scope and, um, and what had happened with how we got students to have an issue with our size and population. So when, when we planned for Sanlon Mountain School, Sean O'Donnell and myself and, um, former superintendent Dr. Reed intended to have about forty, uh, students attend regularly at Sanlon Mountain School. And I remember when, um, Sean stood up and proposed the, the school as in the two years, three years ago, um, President Dry Bird said, "If you can get to forty students within three years, this will be a financially viable school." And I felt so much pressure to, "Oh my gosh, forty students in three years." And then we got to fifty in the first year. So we just didn't know what we didn't know, and we built a building for forty students thinking we would have all this time. And it's great that we're so, serving so many students in our community in such a purposeful way. Another, another thing that we didn't know, we didn't know at the time, was that these students would attend all day. We thought many of them would be partial days, and some of them are, some of our seniors come in late, or leave early, or a combination, or both, just like at the high school. But in general, our students attend all day, every day, and we find that to be very beneficial to them. We find that to be, um, the best way of receiving money as we now know. We do have a handful who are online, just like the high school and other schools in our district, who have still opted to go fully online. Um, but with that said, we have two classrooms, and we also have two offices, and we have a break room slash kitchen area. We have two bathrooms with one bathroom unit each, no stalls. So we tend to have roughly forty-plus students attend every day in person. We have over fifty enrolled, just at over fifty enrolled currently. Um, it, so that, that's about it for, for how we got to, to here and why we're here. Are there, are there any questions?
Well, I, I guess I just, I think the conversation that started happening, we're, we're maxed out.
We are.
Yeah, so we're maxed out, because where are we gonna be? I think it's just knowing, really listening, you know, where, and so then, it'll take some time, but it can probably cast a little bit of... I don't want our next move to be only two years.
Exactly.
So what's our, what's our five-year picture?
Right.
We have a primer, I've put on it, I know it takes some time, but that, that, yeah.
Right.
It's just starting to hit me, how many students should us, the high school our size, how we, there's some kind of cap, you know?
Sure, and there are...
You know, that's sort of that balance thing.
And, um, I'm so hesitant to...
And you don't need to say, commit to anything.
Yeah, and I'd say between seventy and a hundred students. Depending on changes to our community, depending on changes to other schools in our area, goes to Springs High School, Gold Academy, what they offer, um, I think we could get to seventy quickly. Uh, so I, I think we could go upwards of that as well. Right now, not only are we maxed out, we're actually over capacity, um, not, not fire code-wise, but... But if you walk into our school, I, I, I don't have an office, for example, anymore, because I needed, we needed one more room for the kids out. So, um, I have an office first period from, from eight AM until ten, and then I get it back again from three to three forty-five. Uh, other than that, there are multiple kids in there working with an instructor, and, and that's working really well for us, by the way. I'm, I'm happy to do that, um, to make our model work effectively. So, we're, we're band-aiding here and there. Our secretary slash registrar slash health aide slash bus driver for the district, she works out of the kitchen, she has a desk in there, she, she loves it, she's happy. I'm protecting the counselor's office, that's, um, sacred space, and we're gonna let him have to work privately and always have a private office, so that's important to me. Um, other, other things that we could use immediately, I think a nice deck out front would be great. We have a beautiful patio, and we had no idea it was so north-facing, and there was going to be two feet of snow, and the kids are freezing, and they won't touch it with a ten-foot pole. And to say my kids don't wanna go outside is a lot, so the, the front deck, though, they're, they're always hanging out out front. Um, to, yesterday, for example, it was to about two degrees when we got to campus, but at the end of the day, the kids are out there in their t-shirts, just hanging out, it's so much warmer, radiant heat off the building, so a nice front deck would be nice. Um, big-picture ideas that I think could help us, um, and us as a community and a district. I would love a room where we could all gather together, and right now, we can get forty students in one room, we're really on top of each other if we need someone else, so it's good. A bigger room, if we grow any, would be needed. So why not go ahead and think about that in terms of an auxiliary gym that the whole district could use? I think it's a very hidden thing at the moment for many of our sports clubs and buildings in general, especially during basketball season, and the baseball team is trying to find somewhere to get some batting practice, but there are other things going on in every other gym. So if we could have one room that maybe serves not only our needs, but thinking long-term, what do, what do our district buildings also need that we can include in this? And then a couple of smaller rooms that are multipurpose, I would love to have some places for, um, like, recovery or calming down or isolation if needed. I don't have anything like that in case a student needs some space and there's an issue up there. And, but obviously, a couple of more offices and restrooms would be great.
So, so we'll answer your question, it feels like whatever time we need, and Sean and everyone start to think about it, and it hurts to say this, maybe there's some short-term help.
With the dad, yeah.
Like, that, that, they need to think about that, and then there's long-term, big-picture, what might this, start to kick around, plans.
Yes.
That whole thing, because plans and tasks, timelines, et cetera.
Absolutely.
We're just kinda starting that, we don't, we don't view our maxed-out, and here we are, and we'll start to have that engagement. Work to figure out those solutions.
Right, and, I mean, let me start over and just begin by thanking you for your support of alternative education. Students feel as though our community realized, um, that they mattered, and they've been tremendously grateful for that in many ways with us. And the graduation rates that we're experiencing, last year, we graduated sixteen. We will graduate twenty-five or more this year, so it's, we have a lot of seniors, we're very senior-heavy in our school, and that's what we intend to do, we intend to be the last chance. Um, so it's really nice to see that growth continue and to see graduating classes continue to grow. And that wouldn't have happened without some visionary leadership a few years ago to, to put our money where our mouth is as a community and say that, um, strategic plan, thinking that every kid's learning matters every day.
Well, it's, it's a huge success, and success is brought numbers, and now you've got...
Other problems.
Yeah, now we're dealing with problems.
Yeah.
Solve problems before we solve those.
Yeah.
So I guess in terms of next steps for you, uh, you know, where can we help you immediately? Are you in a, in a position now where you can work with district leadership to come up with some alternatives, and then we can work with you on? Or start, like, where do we, like, I'm hearing the need, like, now?
Yeah, I, I guess I would ask that of you too, like, do I, do we begin to engage with engineers? Do we get to pull up the pictures and see what is viable in the space that we have? Um, I, I would need your permission before I start again with those roads.
Well, I think, I think that's right here.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Just like, I think the scope being the need, and how, how big might this get? It's the right, right size of the district, right size of the school. Seems to me like there's a gap, like you would say, like, there's an open end, you go over there, so it's, it's scoping the need, and then, then starting to have two buckets of how to mediate some of the current pressure, ease your processes, and then figure along to the picture.
Right.
At, at the base, then, you can handle it.
Right, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to grow more than twenty persons a year if I, if I was granted a, a break weekend overnight of magic wand, which I think most of you have, magic wands, so, no? Okay, nevermind. But if it were to happen, um, I would still want to not fill it immediately, like, twenty persons for a year, I think would be too much for my staff, otherwise I would worry about the pressure and the strain of putting it on our program.
Is there a question about, um, we talked about this, I think it was, I can say, like, we're missing kids to board?
Yes.
So we wanted to get kids back, so it's kind of two tiers.
There are...
It seems to me like there's, there's ice cream, and there's pulling from other sources, so it's kind of modeling how many students and where they come from, and stay there, and tell them, might be, might be ahead of the building stuff.
Yeah. And Infinite Campus does a really great job of capturing where they come from, so that's, those are easy reports to pull. Um, I, I will say, Gold had about a hundred and thirty-five or so students when we opened it. Not, I haven't, I haven't referenced this, but I do know that it's a lot. Um, I think that's part of our growth. We're, we're also getting a lot of students who are new to the district that were seeking out alternative options in their previous districts and have never enrolled with us in any capacity in this area before. And, and that's surprising, I, I didn't, never to expect that, but a lot of parents have sought us out. And there are students in the criteria for our school as well.
Yeah, so I mean, that might be a sign that one is kind of modeling the student population and sources. Tend to, the next, a few years, we're, we're reaching some maximum capacity here. So we have a longer-term vision of students who serve in any, or helping to, helping to... Helping, helping that district in a sense of bringing in outside, lots of shit. And then these short-term things that might help you get some things that might be in your other initial list. Does that sound clear?
Yes, absolutely.
And then the time it takes to really start thinking about the big solutions to get into a hundred kids or something. That's a, that's a much greater task. It takes some planning.
Right, and it would be great if our district didn't, or if our, I should say, our area and our community didn't need an alternative school for a hundred students, but evidently it already did. If our other alternative school, our alternative education campus, as designated by CBE, already had close to a hundred and forty before we opened, it seems like there was some need for that, so. I can't imagine that we wouldn't grow.
So I can throw it up here, so. Will you comment?
No, I was just asking, do you have like a projection for what year does twenty-two, twenty-three new application enrollment numbers look like?
Um, I expect us to cap right around. I say we cap at forty every year, but I'm a sufferer for these guys, so we get fifty.
What would that be, involve some new students, though, as opposed to retaining?
Oh, hopefully, we'll have approximately thirty new students out of fifty-ish.
Because you retain twenty, you bring thirty new students. Because you're graduating, you're having new seniors.
We're having new seniors first. So upwards, the upper twenties.
So I'd say, I mean, it sounds to me like a good way forward is if you can work on some projections in like the three-year to ten-year time range, like a three, five, ten first year. And then if we think about some alternatives that are more immediate, that can help people feel less like adversity in the seams, it means we might be able to look at investments or other opportunities in the next couple of years. And then also just planning with, you know, building maintenance and district edge and to think about what is that longer time horizon and what kind of, I like that you're thinking about community need and like overall district need, so matching up a couple of opportunities there. I think we can create. I think we can have a conversation.
Right. I guess where we're struggling at the moment is to figure out how to give us more indoor space attached to a modular. We needed a building immediately and we got one in the modular and that's been fantastic. But you can't add onto them and stick built, so it's difficult to just manufacture some more indoor space. And the high school's busting with seams, so we can't borrow their gym. We can't, we don't have a weight room or anything like that for PD. There's some options we're kicking around, including walking to the PD's in the next year and that kind of thing. But other than that, if anyone has any ideas for how to get some more indoor class space, that would be great. Temporary.
We're not big, we don't have a lot of solutions.
Yeah.
Lori, but we're sure engaged in the conversation, understanding the need.
Yeah.
And at your discretion, sideways, running back, we're having to talk about where the numbers might go over the next few years, I think, like now.
Sure.
And I think we probably have pretty realistic short-term, we've created things. But aren't big building projects, very capital.
Yeah, the deck should be an easy fix. For a little additional space, if you get one classroom outside of the PD's. And then maybe my office would be recovered for parts of the day if there were weather days, type of things.
So you might think of other.
Yes, absolutely.
Easy stretch sort of things, and that, but you're entertaining, hearing about those things early. And then the bigger stuff, it's just going to take some time.
Right, now, and we understand that we're, again, so grateful for your support and what we do have. Incredibly grateful for what we do have. These kids feel like they have a home. And that's saying a lot for a lot of kids who felt very disenfranchised and unengaged in education. They feel as though they have a home. And it's the newest one in the district, so they're kind of proud of that.
Oh, you know, yeah, it's fabulous. You graduate another block of kids that may not have graduated.
Yes, yes, that's.
That's the idea.
Yeah, we look forward to seeing each of you at graduation. It's a fun one. It's a really fun.
And we appreciate you coming in and kind of getting our brain moving on that and knowing where we're stepping. When you're ready to, you know, to come back and talk about numbers and easy, easier.
Okay. Thank you.
As, let's see that.
Thank you.
All right. I think around the school board board calendar, pretty easy. So that just lays out our board meetings. About twenty-two. And other special meetings. Any things to be added or any clarification there?
The budget calendar had a K thirty-fourth meeting. See that there's a January eighth meeting, so that would be added.
Okay.
And have you had any confirmation from CASB about the school board treaty?
I haven't. I know we.
We talked.
I checked it out and we put it on the calendar in March.
March.
And then I, I'm not sure if I've got that. Hey, as I said.
I will, I will follow up.
Well, maybe perhaps Robert, I don't know. She may have known. Yeah, she was reaching out, saying, can we get off her? Thanks for offering. What was that date? Wasn't it like fifteenth March?
Fifteen.
Yes.
Go ahead. Okay, so the sheets are nailed down with that. And then we wanted to add your date.
Uh, May thirty-first at six. What day of the week is that?
For a button.
I have to wait till then to inform a button for you guys.
Right. So we do have to. Okay, moving right along. You got that?
Thank you.
Do we want to decide on time?
Yeah, yeah. What time you, whatever, earlier work, five work, or six?
Five twenty-five.
Thirty, I'm sorry, that's Tuesday just before graduation. Yeah. Any kind of work.
Sign up.
Okay, and now we are moving to public comment part, this meeting. You pick the side of, yeah.
First, I had a question about two hours ago. I may have a suggestion for the board as well. We don't need to hear about the calendar. It's not fair that people came here to make comment and you waited, waited two hours for public comments. So my suggestion would probably be public comment at the beginning, for those who need to leave, public comment at the very end. Okay, thank you. All right, listen, not going to be disrespectful to presenters, they don't want to be here either, but it's unacceptable to make us wait two hours. I had a question for Mr. O'Donnell.
I agree.
Special things?
Yeah.
People have kids, they came for that.
Rude and inconsiderate. Probably not coming out. Mr. O'Donnell, thank you for clarifying that. We still don't have an answer as to who let them in. But also, San Juan Basin contacted and told specifically that they are no longer allowed on school property to promote this, whatever they're promoting here. Have they been contacted?
I did not contact San Juan Basin.
My other question is, maybe it's just a comment.
Great, you, have you signed up for the comment?
No, and I should have. You put me down, Bethany Cole, CO Box five nine seven six.
Okay, so let's, so let's put you down.
Okay, put me down, and I just have one comment. When you're saying that you are on school property.
You don't get to do this.
Well, I waited two hours. We can do this.
We're gonna wait another two hours? Do we have a long meeting?
Oh, wait two more hours, guys, for comments.
I didn't say that.
So I just have one question. She says she's gonna, she's promoting vaccinations on school property. I'm gonna give you the benefit of the doubt, that it's through a licensed physician. But promoting these, and are you promoting them as safe and effective? That's what I'd like to know. Thank you. That was my only comment. You can have it.
Okay, so whether you get to comment at the front or the end, whatever. School districts all over Colorado, it's very different when many have public comments at the end, at the end.
Yes, but for two hours, keeping us here for two hours? For putting it at number nine after word discussion.
You can comment at the end. We can choose that. We moved it around at different times, so.
Yes, I don't think it's a great choice. My suggestion would be adding one up front, one at the bottom.
That's, we appreciate your suggestion.
Thank you.
It's also, we don't, we don't have to take public comment. So it's by our discretion that we're taking public comment. We're trying to listen to people.
We actually do.
We have for a month now, and I also know we're gonna get to that now. We have a lot of comments about substitutes. We worked really hard on that. We have a lot of comments on all things really, the virus, we stayed in person in school. We don't have mask mandates.
But you do have the masks.
So those are big things that are going well and are just here. And so we will hear your comments now. We'll read your comments.
I'm gonna read the public comment. The board will now hear public comment. The board hears public comments to learn about the preferences and concerns of our community. Questions asked during public comment that require further investigation may be referred to the superintendent or designee for consideration in later response. The board will not make any comments concerning your remarks. The board welcomes the comments of our community members, but to ensure that everyone will have an opportunity to participate, we have a few ground rules we ask you to follow. Anyone intending to address the board shall sign the speaker's sign-in sheet at the front of the boardroom. Speakers will be called to address the board in the order in which they are listed on the sign-in sheet. Speaker comments are limited to three minutes with a total of thirty minutes for all public comments. Individuals may not yield their allotted time to another speaker. Organized groups speaking on the same topic will be restricted to a total of twelve minutes. To be respectful of everyone's time, we ask that you cover only points not made previously. While we cannot limit individuals' constitutional rights to express themselves, we also remind speakers that you are each responsible for your own speech. The board will listen with respect, then asks those who address the board to do the same. In order to respect all persons when addressing the board, we request that the audience addresses issues rather than personalities. Profanity, yelling, fighting words, detamatory or abusive remarks, or derogatory language are out of order and shall end the speaker's privilege to address the board and may be grounds for removal from the meeting. We thank you in advance for your participation tonight, and we now welcome our first member of the public. The first member of.
Three minutes is the guideline. We've got people running over quite a bit. I'm gonna, three minute timeline, and I'll say, please wrap it up respectfully. Ask you, it'll take about ten seconds to finish your talk. Don't go on for another minute.
Bethany Jones.
Yep. Hi, I'm Soli Mullinger-Pace here. By now, I'm sure you guys are seeing me at almost every single board meeting. I will just echo what Bethany Cole said. I have been at county commissioner meetings. I have been at town council meetings. Never have I been made to wait two and a half hours to get public comment. I'll just say this, there's parents with small children that came out to comment. This is a school night. I feel like that's completely inappropriate and unacceptable, so you can take that as you wish. In August, I came with great hope and anticipation, as we had enrolled our oldest in high school. I did quite a bit of research before that meeting and found the oath that you all took. That's outlined by the Colorado Senate Bill seventeen dash two-nine-six, section six and seven, where you all vowed to uphold the Colorado and US Constitution. I heard that again echoed in November at your meeting by you guys. I, at that time in August, vowed that I would do everything I could possibly do to support the school, Dr. Kim, the teachers. I held on to my hope and belief that you guys were doing the best job possible. I really still believe you're trying to do that. In October, the news of the test to stay program came up. I came in and asked about that. In November, I heard you guys reaffirm your oath out loud. In November, because of a COVID outbreak, ninety-nine percent of the high school was sent to remote learning. I came in to ask about that. Also, in November, I found out for the first time ever that the schools were severely lacking in subs. Another reason I went to remote learning. I practically begged our community, begged you guys to make the community aware at that time. Nothing happened. In fact, I was talked over and kicked off your Zoom meeting. In December, I started researching COVID relief funds that Archileta County specifically received, attached to things like masking on buses, remote learning, quarantining. I found it very concerning. In January, my phone started blowing up with distraught elementary parents because school went remote again. Due to lack of subs, I came in and asked again, what's the plan? I was met later that week with accusations of hurting Dr. Kim's feelings and her resignation. I assure you, having Dr. Kim resign was never the goal, ever. In fact, I was quite disappointed to hear that. We still have unanswered questions. How much funding are you receiving for masking kids on buses? How are you able to legally force bus drivers who are not licensed medical professionals to enforce medical procedures on kids? Will bus drivers be held liable if a medical emergency happens to resolve as a result of masking kids on buses? Why is there still nothing on the dashboard native subs except a tiny health one that's out in the newspaper? What you propose for single parents that can't keep a job and kids at home when their teacher's out and the class can't attend school? I know this is happening in the elementary. I don't expect you to have all the answers today, but it has now been two years and there's still no great plan of action. I firmly believe that we can do better. Thank you.
Levon Ribada.
Good evening and thank you, oh, I'm so mad. Thank you for making us wait two and a half hours for children. Let me say, my comments that I make, this board, meaning, as a taxpayer, a resident of Gose Springs, and not an employee of Archileta County, not a professional in life. You want to know how much bus drivers get paid? They get paid five dollars a trip. That's ten bucks a day to put masks on kids. Fauci himself said how worthless they are. Do the research yourself. I'm done. It is not right. This precious child, his mom stuck you head at the door one day and said, please don't put a mask on my child. And I said, you know what? I'm not, because I'm done. I'm done. And all this stuff made my decision for me tonight. I'm done. I will turn in my keys tomorrow. I will text Lori. I serve God. I'm done with this stuff. I am not, thank you, Darma, I'm not gonna be party to this any, anymore. I'm not putting masks on kids and I'm not supporting any more of this. Choose who you serve and choose wisely. So have a good night.
Amen.
Ronnie Vaughn.
My name is Ronnie Vaughn. My residence here is in eighty-four circle. I would like to thank the Congress, the State, and the teachers for it. I would like for you to write down two names of two doctors, please. Dr. Robert Malone, Dr. Peter McCullough. These two doctors, with sixteen thousand other doctors, have been presenting the other side of this shot that is being forced on our population. that is being forced on our population for the last one year. Dr. Malone is the inventor of the M R eight M V technology. And Dr. McCullough is a world-known cardiologist. Listen to his words.
Let's pick up on Hasi at all from the C D C M M W R. They published six weeks of safety data of children ages five to eleven getting the vaccines and the data were not good at all. They ended up with a hundred serious safety reports, fifteen percent of which had an elevation in trachea. That means there's heart injury occurring in children below age twelve. We previously didn't think this was possible. When we looked at myocarditis before COVID nineteen vaccination, you almost never saw it before puberty. Almost, it's basically just didn't happen. A paper by Aronian colleagues from Finland demonstrated that, you know, the explosion in myocarditis is very rare. But if it happens, it happens after puberty. Here with the COVID nineteen vaccines, it looks like it's gonna happen in younger children. And then in the Hasi paper, the self-reported data came in from V-Safe, Alex, and reported there systemic reactions were reported in thirty-four percent of the children on shot one, forty percent on shot two, and then a negative health impact on the children. Ten percent of those in shot one and fifteen percent in shot two, and that's by Hasi in M M W R. That was just out recently. This does not look good. This is C D C data. And I can tell you, since children of this age have a negligible symptomatic presentation for COVID nineteen, and it's likely the majority are now COVID recovered, to actually sustain this type of damage and injury is simply unacceptable.
Sorry to say that the Junior's Heroes Program that was committed into our schools, which was sort of addressed tonight, shows that only one side of this shot is being presented. Students could not even express any opposition to the shot according to the rules.
Your time, your time's up, so do you take about ten seconds to wrap up?
And I believe that the program has been extended. This has got to stop. There is another side of this shot, and you are preventing students, parents, teachers, and the public from being educated on this issue. Educated. Ninety-nine percent of our youth will survive. Ninety-nine point nine percent will survive without the shot. We now know that there are major side effects from this vaccine. Y'all have a responsibility to inform the public, the parents. I am here to help you. These people back here are here to help you on a committee to get this word out to the people. Thank you very much.
Rhonda Sledge.
Hi, my name is Rhonda Sledge. I live at forty-eight Kelsey Circle. And I've been coming to these meetings for about two years. So let me tell you what I have enjoyed about these meetings. I love when the teachers bring a few students forward to share with us what they learned in classrooms and what they would learn in outside studies. I love seeing six-year-old little girl proud of herself in reading advancement. And the high school kids that came and told us about the readings on the rivers and the lakes for the health of our county. What I really enjoyed at that time and noted that no student was wearing a mask, and I appreciated that. I really appreciate nobody having a mask on tonight. And congratulations to all the students with all their achievements today. But what concerns me, after so many people speaking about the restrictions on the children that has been and still on the school buses, with, like it's been said, it's over a ninety-nine point nine percent survival rate for the children and the students. And there's been a flood of information from thousands of doctors worldwide, worldwide. But you stay steadfast on a very limited, one-sided information that parallels with the grants that you receive. We didn't always have these grants in the school with, and we made it just fine. The taxpayers, we keep it open to other grants, but all this COVID grant is just amazing. So like Ronnie Vaughn just said, how many of y'all wrote the two doctors' names down? I saw two of you. Check it out. How many of y'all followed through with the information that Bethany Jones has presented how many times? What I believe is, I'm beginning to understand why after two years we're in the same place. Do you know my name? I hope and pray that this board doesn't live to regret not being open to all the information because it is for the sake of our children's future. Thank you.
My little thing I'd like to share is, can I ask a couple of questions about every student every day or is that gonna be part of my time? I don't.
It's part of your time.
I don't, I just wanted to.
You're welcome to email us at any time.
Well, I just was hoping that the, there were some things that came up that I think would be kind of important that everybody gets to. Again, with or at least have a part of that. Maybe I'll try to put it into here.
We, we, we'll just say we haven't even started tonight yet, so, you know. Start right now.
Thank you. So I'm gonna try to talk fast, but I have three minutes. Since the board's special meeting a couple of weeks ago, I've had several things running through my mind. Been a part of multiple conversations and had several concerns shared with me. I spent last week parting all these thoughts and conversations and what to do. My resolution was to come here tonight, express my concerns as a parent, go to the board for some changes, and to say what we're, to say we're all accountable for every child in our community. I have a huge affinity for our teachers, and every time I come here, I get emotional. So I apologize if I'm wrong. I try not to, but it seems to work against my favor. That affinity reaches out to our teachers, our administrators, and all the amazing staff that we have. I'm hugely concerned over the last several years of the overwhelmingness that's felt upon them. Some of it's outside of their control, some of it's been brought on by different things that others have brought up, and some of it's been brought on by the board. Some of them are why we still have our kids in public schools, and I'll say that for a personal fact. There are some amazing people out there, and I keep putting my kids in public school because I want my kids to have them. Without those certain individuals, my family, like many more, would be looking for alternative means of education. If we keep losing teachers and staff, not supporting those individuals or allowing some teachers to use their classroom as a personal agenda platform, the school district may start losing students, and I heard on finances, huge component. We have to take into consideration that the teachers and staff are vital in retaining students. If we don't start looking at what their needs are and how we can help them, students don't matter anymore. As a board, a community, a family, we need to come together and support these teachers making positive impacts on our kids. We need not to burden them, sorry, we need to unburden them, let them teach without overwhelming them, and allow equal and ethical discipline to occur without fear, to go against the current norm and cultivate minds that use openness, creativity, and critical thinking. I propose that we speak to these teachers and administrators and ask them what we can do to help them. Don't assume we know what they need. Ask them what they need. The more positive impact teachers we have, the more our kids will thrive. As for the kids, we should be concerned. Yes, there's a lot going on with COVID. We should be concerned. That's a whole different topic from you. But what I'm most concerned about, and we've ignored it, and we let it get out of hand, the use of bait products, drugs, alcohol use, mental health. To me, those in our current times are the four biggest things we need to be concerned about. When and how will this school board approach these concerns? When elementary students.
Can you wrap up there? These ten seconds, that is your three minutes. I appreciate you bashing me with your gun.
Really?
I'll donate my time to him.
No, we.
They don't do that in the United States. They don't want that.
So we can summarize that, and that's how we wanna play that. Let me ask them, finish this up.
We're gonna play by the rules.
No, and, and I appreciate that, and I'm gonna stay with that. And I appreciate that. As a school board, I'm glad that our district obtained the avid grant for continuing education and growth for our teachers. That's a great thing that we went out. What I was not happy is when I learned that the board approved a custom position for the former superintendent's husband for ninety thousand dollars to oversee that grant. So while we got a grant to help these men and women cultivate my children, their children, our community's children, why did the board approve a position for ninety thousand that didn't even be approved when that money could have been used somewhere else? I appreciate you and thank you for your time.
Dale Smith.
Dale Smith, four seventy-two, no, correct. So I just have a couple of things, and it just came up. Who made the rule that, because we used to be able to donate our time, and I know you have thirty minutes, but if it takes forty or fifty or a hundred because of things that we, the people, think are wrong, who, who made that rule that it's thirty minutes, and who made that rule that we can't donate our time? Does anyone know that? Or is that Kim and she's gone?
No, the policy from the school board, I'll just answer. It's called policy from the school board has been thirty minutes for decades.
I can live with that one, but what about, because it used to be we donate our time, and then somebody in this group or somebody's go, no, we're not gonna allow that anymore. And I'd like to know why that is.
I, we can answer that via email, but we, we modified the policy because we think hearing from one person at a time.
Yeah, so at the next meeting, I'll be here. I would like that answered. If that, will that give you the answer?
We, we modified the policy collectively as a board to say that you can't hand off your time.
But why? When we used to do it?
Because we wanna hear.
What I, what I see is when you do that is you are, you are putting the thumb on us going, we don't want them to. And I know.
So I'll let you gather a few minutes now, but the reason was because we wanna hear from more voices.
Yeah, but.
We want ten people to donate their time if one person.
Well, we wanna hear their voice.
We wanna hear from more voices, and so that's how, that's how we decide. So you're, so appreciate it, Mr. Smith.
Then another thing that happened.
Your three minutes is on.
Restart it?
Yeah, restart it because I was answering a question.
One, one more last thing is that young lady back there, I heard her say twice, maybe three times, she needs help. Is this the board that can help get her some help for what she does? Because I was pretty impressed with what she's doing. Or is there no money in the budget? And by the way, thank you for what you did, and then I know that you just got that job, but Laura, I expect the next time we come, you'll have the COVID nineteen information that I asked you to prepare.
Nicole Reed.
I'm Nicole Reed. Hudson Rick is my little boy that was standing up here. I actually didn't have anything prepared before I came, but thank you for the two hours you made me to do that. I think personally that we landed the best bus driver we could ever my little boy and the best kindergarten teacher we could have asked for. I'm very emotional right now because when we started, and I'm sure I'm gonna get deducted for crying, so go ahead. When we started this school year, I had a newborn that was in the NICU for R S P, and she almost lost her life. Levon picked up my little boy every day and brought him home every day and with much care, and she took care of him and made sure he got to where he needed to. She cared deeply, and that is rare. And I'm so sad. I had no idea that she was gonna do that today, and that breaks my heart that she had to do that. It breaks my heart that she doesn't have a voice to say, I would like to drive this bus without a mask on my face and not force it on these children. I'm glad that my little boy was able to be in here and stand up for what is right. I didn't think that he would have to stand for justice at five years old. And for that, I'm sad that he has to do that. I looked into some things considering the E S S R funds, and if that is what we are getting funding from, I'm not sure if you are, but if it is, one of the requirements is that if someone does not comply, remove them from the bus, from transportation. And I did not like that because of the fear that would instill in the children. I remember whenever I first decided I'm not gonna wear a mask in City Market, how fearful I was, the confrontation that might come, and how much more it might be for children if they have to worry about that. I'm not gonna let that happen. If it even means I need to take my little boy out of school, because I have four small children. Four months old, two years old, I'd bring her, your little girl, four years old and five. Okay, so Levon is less than me tremendously. If she goes morning, I may not have been able to talk to the school with our situation. And so I don't want to see our kids intimidated for not wearing their mask. And so I see people in football stadiums that are all fully masked, and we're all sitting here fully, sorry, unmasked, and we're all sitting here fully unmasked. Why does my child have to get on a bus to mask? I wanna know the answer, and I do not wanna sit back and wait for it. I would like that answer, please. Thank you.
I worry we have time.
She didn't start the talk.
Eight nineteen, I reckon it's the first.
Eight nineteen, so it's forty-one now, so we are twenty-two minutes.
So we have time for two more speakers.
So we have Roger Sanchez.
I. I was, there's, there's a lot of things going on in my head regarding San Juan Basic Public Health, Junior Heroes Project. It is very concerning to me that Adam, that you haven't reached out to San Juan Basic Public Health, that nothing has gone anywhere, and this just, just kind of upset me as well. There should be no reason that he should go to you first. What he did, in my opinion, made us aware of what was going on. If he had gone to you first, would we have known about it? I don't think so. That's just my opinion, though. I did find out with Pagosa Springs Mayor candidate Sarah Cole, both her and I researched who was actually here during that time. It is a person named Stephen Eaton. He's a COVID nineteen Equity Outreach Coordinator, and also Sandra Lane, a COVID nineteen Equity Outreach Coordinator. And I think their manager is Sarah Cancello Berry, says here, she's a COVID nineteen Outreach Project Program Manager. It does need to be looked into. You have the information now of who they are. There needs to be some accountability. We don't know what could have happened. That vandalism, a child being kidnapped, anything could have happened. We move that little whole thing there. I have been in IT, I've been in the IT field for roughly, maybe a little bit less than twenty years. A good part of that was as an IT manager. I learned to take accountability and not have an ego about things that, that I did wrong or that I got wrong. I'm not perfect. My teammates are perfect, but I take ownership when something goes wrong. I didn't see ownership happen here today. I see it deflecting. And we need answers. Research twenty-two U S Code seventy-one oh four. It requires you to prevent what had happened by those people walking in from happening in the first place. Just one last thing. I recommend this team to purchase microphones for each board member. It's very difficult to hear a lot of you talk very low. I found some on, on Amazon, cheap brand pile. It got good reviews, three hundred dollars for like eight microphones and a good system, so I can help you set it up. I'm trying to get out of IT, but some, it keeps pulling me back. Thank you for your time. I do feel like everybody is trying their hardest on everything, but again, this is a huge oversight. I have to. But again, this is a huge oversight, I have to point the finger somewhere. Thank you.
Wayne Bryant? Oh, he actually had leave, so he's not here.
Okay, so...
One more that wanted to speak.
Yeah, could I say something? I know I'm on the list.
Go ahead. We got time, one more. Clintson?
I would recommend you guys have an opportunity to shine for our community. Get that bus driver back. Do what you can to get her back. And that's all I have to say.
If I can say something, I just want to say it was shown tonight that the bus drivers like her seem to be the ones who care the most and have connections with the community. She, you know, brought some kiddos from the school district that she obviously has built a relationship with and that they trust, and she cares for them. The bus drivers that we need are the ones who care for the children, and they can trust. So I just, it was really hard for me tonight to see her, because she wouldn't be doing her job if she didn't care about the kids. And it was really upsetting for me to see the way that she had to leave, because we don't want to see that, especially right now with my so shorthand. We're trying to get bus drivers, we're trying to get substitute teachers. We don't need any more staff, especially with those.
All right, we could sit in a room like this without a mask for over two hours. The kids on the short bus right there.
Appreciate you coming. I know that she's an excellent bus driver.
So I don't know if she would want her position anymore, or if you guys would be willing to give it to her.
Oh, absolutely.
We can use her.
Absolutely. So we are done with public comment, we appreciate you hanging in there. We thought you might want to see some of the board work that we do. I didn't get that feeling. They got feedback. When we can't hear you, doesn't do a sound, you do it once or whatever. Okay, so we're going to take a break here for a little over five minutes, at five to nine. We, you don't have to stay. We have quite a few more things we have to get done today.
What did you just do different that now you're kind of, we can hear you better?
No, I have, we have these mics.
I know, but you haven't been using it. This is the first time I've heard you.
See, it's off now, and it's on, so I picked up my voice. Mr. President, I emailed you, you didn't respond back. You don't respond to emails. Thank you. And we're back to research, five to, thank you all, everybody. Okay, we're going to reconvene. It's nine o'clock.
I'm going to stay.
We've got to get the recording started.
We need to think about... We need to think. Several actions in the presentation here.
Oh, yes, we're recording. Recording in progress.
Okay, we're going to resume the meeting here now. We just finished public comments, so we're moving to the approval of the consent agenda, which I want to point out for everybody who's still here, has four new subs we approved on it. So that district is taking action, and things are... We need a motion to approve the consent.
I will move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mrs. Quinn? Hi. Mr. Lynch?
Hi.
Mr. Menke?
Hi.
Mrs. Schick?
Hi.
Mr. Taylor?
Hi.
Motion carried. All right, moving on. The twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar has to be approved, any comment? Or do you have to survey on that?
Lots of surveys, lots of action. But this is the calendar that I would say is closest to the twenty-one, twenty-two calendar. It has a hundred and seventy-five teacher contract days, and it was the, by fifty-four percent, the selected calendar. So thank you to our calendar committee, and I recommend that we go with option four, the various options that were presented to the staff.
And that's what's before us here, so we need a motion to approve that calendar.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll make that motion to approve that calendar after all that work. Do you have a second?
A second? You...
Second by Director Schick. Any discussion?
Ms. Laura, do you feel like this option best displays your staff's votes and thoughts and voice?
Yes, ma'am. We have a committee of teachers, certified staff, administrators, and we hash out all the things like, when do we want parent conference? And does it really help to have this shortened day at this point? You know, we look at it through the lens of what's best for kids, and somehow we end up with the same calendar, or close to it. So this, I do feel this is a good representation.
All right, so let's have a vote on that then.
Mrs. Quinn? Hi. Mr. Lynch?
Hi.
Mr. Menke?
Hi.
Mrs. Schick?
Hi.
Mr. Taylor?
Hi.
Motion carried, all right. My board docs just crashed out here. I guess a meeting was a very important part of this meeting. We have the action item.
It's not touchscreen, sorry.
No, it's... At the last meeting, we named Laura the finalist to the interim superintendent position, and so tonight, now forcing gates has passed, and we need to officially make her, official in that role, and we need to approve the salary for that role. So what I'm looking for... Oh, sorry.
It's hard to retrain yourself, I mean.
You have both the suggested, basic motion suggestion there and the place to fill in a salary. And then you had, I think, also, as an attachment, this piece that Daryl wrote up, which was the more specific extravagant... Notice of Extravagant Assignment?
I think there's an internet, we're experiencing an internet issue, everyone.
Okay, yeah.
We have the I C department.
So that's why I had to say, and we have this copy here too, so... The first order of business, let me just...
We can't access it.
Yeah, let's get the hard part out of there. We have to agree on salary that Laura will pay. I know we love all these discussions in public, but that's where they belong. So we know the ranges, we know what Laura's current salary is, we know that Dr. Kim was paid around one forty-three. So we need to figure out where that is fair, compensate Laura for one, just taking on this whole role right now, since days ago, this whole duties there, continuing to do her job and jump in and fill that role admirably as soon as she can. Fairly compensated for that, we need to kick that around a little bit and agree on the number to fill in in that blank, and then approve the motion to include the interim in, including the section of the assignment definition. Thoughts on that, Laura?
My thought is that Mrs. Laharis is stepping up into a really important role during a time that we are seeking some stability in our district for a variety of reasons. I want to make sure that she is able to perform that duty in the best way possible, and I want to be sure that her compensation reflects that she is stepping up in a very good way in a leadership role in our district. So those are my thoughts. If we want to get in public about it, I would recommend a starting salary for this position at a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
I think that's in the right range in my mind, somewhere in the middle of current salary doing, and then the high, the high end of that middle. So I support that, a number right around that place. Once you take on the mantle and you are in that job, there's nobody else who loves it, so you're fairly compensated for that. That's also quite reasonable, given all the salaries they made work we did while we did the superintendent search, apparently two years ago, so...
Well, I think also we've got to keep in mind that she didn't have an assistant superintendent. She was kind of flying solo there. So she's going to have additional workload that you wouldn't ordinarily have. You need to keep that in mind, I think.
I agree. And while we authorize Laura certainly in that role, she knows she can get resources, but they don't care if it's materializing. That takes time. We've got to figure that out, so it's definitely going to be a dumb, dandy job for a period of time. Let's go down the line here. All right, and a irritant motion that would identify that hole, that sign with extravagant, and that salary.
So what happens if she doesn't get the position permanently, then does her salary go back? That's my question as a tax rate.
Should be paid according to whatever position she's in.
Right, so I'm asking...
This is interim until June thirty.
Okay, so yes, the answer is yes.
Based on a salary schedule that is established in the...
I don't have a problem with that, I'm just wondering what... No, yes, that's your question.
Mr. President, I would move that we appoint Laura Laharis as the interim superintendent effective February ninth, twenty-twenty-two, through June thirtieth, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, with a salary of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars per year. I'm not exactly sure what that translates to per month.
Annualized, that's a twelve-month, it's a... I'll pull it out in a second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board?
Mrs. Quinn? Hi. Mr. Lynch?
Hi.
Mr. Menke?
Hi.
Mrs. Schick?
Hi.
Mr. Taylor?
Hi.
Motion carries, that's official, and we can't thank you enough, Laura, for taking on all of, everyone said it pretty well, just two jobs for a while, and there's lots of responsibility, so... I'm going to be happy to move that and be supportive of your...
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is your portion?
I can get my floor.
But it says student...
Student rep, we...
Oh, we already did that.
We have race, race, I hope you don't regret it yet. Yeah, we really appreciate that, we, our meetings won't always be this long, so thank you very much, hang in there. And we're going to approve some new courses now.
Yes, sir.
And if you do have to, please, it's okay, anytime. Out of school, I agree.
New courses?
Correct. So we have established a timeline for, well, budget is established, and in order to backwards plan, February is the month where we're bringing forward new courses. If they meet the approval of the board, then we would go ahead with more detailed planning, including purchasing of materials or hiring instructors, whatever it may be. So the easy one is, is Ms. Belina still here? Oh, there she is. We have a robotics course, we got a little sample of that, and the robotics course is to build on the program that's already been established. Money provided by the Southwest Collaborative to buy some materials, and Mr. Quinn is the instructor.
Correct. You met some of the students last month.
Yes.
I don't know if there are any questions for Ms. Belina about that specific course, or we, are we going to vote on these separately, the three quarter...
I think we can hear them all.
Yeah, okay.
Any questions?
We saw a great demonstration last night.
Yeah, it was, I said this is going to be an easy pitch, they know all about it.
Aware.
Okay, Mr. O'Donnell, you have...
You're not going to present mine?
You have somebody to present.
I do. I think we'll start with printmaking. Kelly Lewis is our art teacher at high school, and she approached me about increasing our offerings to the art department, and she would like to offer a printmaking class. I'm going to let her kind of talk about what that is.
Yeah, so my, I have a B A, yeah, B A, in printmaking. I did a unit on it in my last class, and my students loved it, it's definitely within my wheelhouse. So I'd like to add a little bit more variety to the art offerings and offer a printmaking course. Do you guys have any other questions for me?
This is a semester term?
Yes, yeah. And if I could point out to the board, when we initially did the upload, we scanned only the odd number pages, and so quickly remedied that. So in the board packet now are both odd and even pages to each course description, which include the budget consideration, so that is on page two.
Can you ensure for us, what is that, was printmaking?
So, printmaking is a lot of different things. It's really old-fashioned way of like making posters and all of that kind of stuff. So all T-shirts that you see that have logos on them are screen printed, that's one of the ways that I'd like to, one of the things that I'd like to propose for my printmaking course, and actually face fund a big grant for me to buy all the supplies to do that for my normal classroom outside of a printmaking class. But basically, carding a stamp and printing that stamp on all kinds of stuff, so...
We have staff T-shirts.
Yeah. I should have said board T-shirts.
Board T-shirts. Real, are you? Any more questions for Kelly?
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Entertaining and creative.
Oh, yeah, thank you, guys.
So this next one, introduce you guys to Adam Taylor. Adam is currently working as a aide in our special talents program, who's working to be good for our own kids. Amazing guy. So it, he comes with an automotive technology, automotive industry background, and that is a, one of the places that we know we need to increase in our C T E offerings. I've heard from, you know, my mechanic, the one I take my vehicle to, tells me all the time the struggles they have trying to find people for their industry, and doing surveys with the kids on things they'd like to see. The one that was kind of number one this year that came up was not a motor course, not a motor coursework. Um, this one, I'm going to let Adam talk about, um, you know, kind of what we would propose for an automotive one and automotive two, what that kind of pathway would look like CTE-wise. He's already gone through and got his CTE certification. So, he's, that's done. Um, but, um, we'll, I'll let him talk about that, but then we also need to talk because this one does come with a bit of a price tag against.
Yeah, unfortunately automotive doesn't come cheap. You know that if you've ever had to fix your car or.
I have tools.
Exactly, so, um, so let me kind of back up here a little bit, give you a little bit of insight as to where I come from and why I can bring this. Um, I have twenty-five years in the automotive industry, and I've been an ASE Master Tech for, I think, twenty-three to twenty-five years. Um, I came from Universal Technical Institute. I worked with them for fifteen years and did everything from taught classes, developed programs. Um, I developed training aids for two years with them, as well as wrote curriculum for both Universal Technical Institute and Ford Motor Company. So, I'm confident in what I can deliver here. Um, when I sat down with this, I had everyone to need to, to bring a top-quality program, but automotive is expensive. So, you know, I started looking at around the two-hundred, three-hundred thousand dollar range, and that's approximately what most of these, you know, higher-end shops are putting just to open up the doors. So, I know that that wasn't going to be a, a number that we could work with. And after working with, uh, both Sean and Josh to kind of figure out where we would go with this, because automotive can be huge, or it could be taking time depending on where you want to go. CTE has some pretty good recommendations, guidelines, if you will, and we kind of based a lot of it off of that. So, what you see in my proposal is to meet most of the requirements of CTE. We can't do everything. They, there are certain things that are listed there that would be astronomically expensive. If you want to start doing automatic transmissions, an automatic transmission dyno will cost you a hundred grand. So, to keep the super technical stuff kind of out of this, that would be better suited for, you know, continuing education, for your vocational schools and things like that. So, for the first automotive program, the start is going to be introduction. So, we're going to start with tenth grade, and again, this would be open to tenth, eleventh, and twelfth. But my thought would be a tenth grader comes in, and we start off with giving them some overview of the, the industry. Uh, if you have any background in automotive or any kind of machine work, you understand that there's a language to that in itself. Just like medical has their own language, automotive, machine, we have our own language too. So, it would start off with conditioning as to, to what the car is, what the environment is, what kind of money they could make, and that's the real caveat to all of this. Um, what are some of the expectations, and what are some of the, the legal things that a technician has to be responsible for? That would lead into a very basic, um, brakes, steering suspension, electrical, uh, engines. Um, we would get into a lot of the nuts and bolts, but this would not be a diagnostic course, way too early to start bringing diagnostics in. Touch on it a little bit, but I'm not going to send a student out, uh, with their second week in the, in the first program to diagnose huge driveability problems. That's not fair. So, it would be an introductory course, pretty much to get them familiar with, you know, how do tools work? What's the right side and the left side of the car? A lot of technicians don't get that right. Um, you know, how to work around the car, how to, what the tools are called, you know, all of these things, uh, are part of that buildup process. So, the first semester, if you will, or the first teach of the, of the automotive one program, would be just introduction. Uh, there'd be a lot of board trainers, there would be a lot of smaller things, uh, to, to, uh, for the student to work with that doesn't necessarily have the complicated process of, you know, taking it out of the car. There'll be some of that, but that's going to be real length. My first automotive program, we're not pulling engines right out of, you know, those engines will already be out of the stand to go through that. When we get into the second course, the automotive two, that gets a little bit more advanced because of my students now that have gone through, they've got their basics. I know now that they can handle using air, you know, impact guns and stuff like that, that they're not going to drive over each other. One of the troubles with automotive is there's a fair amount of liability here. So, uh, I hope I don't jinx myself with this, but after fifteen years, I have a perfect lab record. Knock on everything. Um, but I maintain that, and I expect to maintain that. It's important to me that, that these students get what they're here for and leave with everything they showed up with, fingers, toes, arms, this class stuff. You know, it's, might be entertaining for the rest of the class, but I assure you, for the teacher and the student, it's not a good thing. Um, the second automotive would be something that would gear them up to working on live cars. I say that with the, with the thought that they won't be working on customers' cars. Automotive two is not bringing live customer cars in for students to take them to park and potentially damage that. The live work would be more on the training aids that we would have. I would have bug vehicles. That's where we get into the diagnostic. That's where we get into, uh, doing work that the shops would kind of start to expect, okay? Um, if everything goes well, automotive three, which is going to be probably another year or two out, that would be a perfect opportunity now to have students working on a project base. Um, I sat here at the last Fourth of July parade that go right through town, and I didn't see a lot of representation from the schools. You've got a lot of clubs and stuff in town, but I, I would love to see a hot rod rolling down the street with my students that go down. I'd like to build a T-bucket road surfer for my third course. But that's something where students now have to understand math, they've got to understand the science, they've got to understand the physics. They've got to bring all of that together, and they got to put this, word by word. My dream would be to have nothing, and we start from scratch, and we go all the way to the end. And we show that off in a parade or something to that effect. If we have some, uh, good buy-in, which I know a couple of the dealers, I should say the shops in town that I've spoken with, seem to be pretty open to, uh, possibly getting involved with this program with apprenticeships. Um, and that would be a good time for that to happen, would be in that third automotive course, because they're well-versed. They understand the shops, they're writing repair orders, they've got a good feel. Um, and then if we can get them into a shop through an apprenticeship program, or there's some other things out there, uh, like, for example, Ford Motor Company, uh, they can't get enough technicians at the post-secondary level. So, they're in the high schools right now trying to pull students before they even make decisions like careers. So, you know, things like that might be a resource for us to pull them to. Anywhere that you go, everywhere in the world, technicians are a man. Um, my goal here is to, well, I'm not teaching it, but I would like to be able to do that in this community, and we got to start from scratch.
Yeah. So, I'm going to shift us to the back, or the odd page that maybe did.
It's there.
It's there now.
It wasn't there last week, but, um, about four years ago, I PCC in there, just kind of looking to see whether opportunities for concurrent enrollment. Nice thing about CTE, if you're CTE certified, the community college level, you're automatically certified to teach a critical. So, I was looking to see, okay, we don't have an automotive teacher, but if PCC could provide one, could you teach an automotive class? Could you send us to teach automotive in our shop? And they just walked into the shop and said, you, you don't have the technology to teach it. So, um, that was just kind of put aside, and I guess I knew going in, we didn't have. When we did automotive in that shop, when it opened in ninety-eight, it was probably appropriate, but, um, it's not nineteen ninety-eight, it's two thousand. Two now. Technologies have changed since, um, since we were teaching, since the last time we taught automotive.
Not for some people, for those that.
Well.
So, that's.
Color.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, um, just to bridge, uh, maybe potential low-level technology that you'd be able to afford, as well as connecting it to the, where the demand is for these jobs. Is there a link and bridge that actually allows these students to move into industry that perhaps for a year or year and a half, they were technologically behind in?
Well, what was, I don't want to say that I'm going to keep technology out of it. It's just going to be paced as much as we possibly can. Um, when I was teaching for Universal Technical Institute, I taught a secondary program. I taught an electric program. And we had trouble with employers not understanding that even at that point, they were still considered graduates and not seasoned technicians. So, we were trying to convince shops that, you know, we got a student that just spent fifty-five thousand dollars, came through, took everything, did great. We're trying to convince a shop that this technician is not yet up to that A-level. And that was kind of hard for some of them. So, to answer your question, we will be building in technology. There will be diagnostics. There will be, I'm a big electrical guy. I mean, most of the programs that I taught, wrote were electrical and electronics, so for me to stand here and say, I can't bring that in, I'm lying to you. And I, I will bury that into this course in many places that I possibly can. But I also know electrical is the one thing that tended to drive my students out at the Universal Technical Institutes that I taught at. So, I want to bring that in a little bit later. I will make them competitive, at least at the entry-level position. They will not come out of this program being a Master Tech. It takes years for anybody to achieve that. But if they come through the course and they do what I asked them to do, they are eligible for ASE certifications. They can't, they can't actually accept them until they have two years of work experience in the field. But they can earn them, and it sits there, and it's theirs. They can earn a refrigeration license, they can earn it right away. These are things, if, if you walk into a car dealership and you have a refrigeration license, you get more pay. It's just how it is. The more certifications you walk in, the more valuable you are. So, the students that we have here will get partial credit towards an ASE certification because of the time in school. But ASE still wants them to go out in the field so that they can get that practical experience. I will put students out there that can read a wiring diagram better than most, most technicians. And if you've ever taken your car to a shop, you've probably had a bad experience, at least in the past ten years, if not more recently than that. Um, but I pride myself on my students being able to read a wiring diagram. It was a meter, it's huge for me. Scans will be in this, and the cost that you guys see there has meters and some pretty good scanning equipment in there. Where we won't go is in things like automatic transmissions. Everybody builds them differently. There's so many special tools for it, and the cost is prohibitive. That's why you have dedicated transmission shops. That's all they want to do is just deal with that cost. Um, we're not getting into hybrids. I'll talk about them. We will certainly have conversations on it. But I don't want a seventeen-year-old with very little experience grabbing a three-hundred-volt DC battery cable. They'll be dead before they hit the floor. I'm being realistic. The shock and on automotive sometimes is a little, you know, but it's a reality. So, you know, this, we're talking about machines that have more power than anybody that can't stop with their hands. They drive right over each other.
So, you, you were going to ask a question.
Me?
Yeah.
Uh, I have a couple of questions, but.
Yes.
Can I?
Yes.
Ask them?
Yes.
So, I, I heard something that piqued my interest, and one of them was opportunities for cross-curricular collaboration, um, with maybe a science teacher, with a math teacher. Are you looking at things, are, are we considering that this budget is going to enable a little bit of that? I'm also, I could be reading it wrong, does this budget include, um, a salary differential for, like, this?
Right, it is not.
Okay, I'm just.
Yeah, it is not.
Okay. Um, first, I would like to hear about cross-curricular opportunities with this course. Are they just like being considered? Is that specifically been discussed?
I can, I, I, I have sat in working with some of the special needs students that we have special talents institute. Um, I've sat in several of the science classes, and I've done presentations down there, so I can't see why. I mean, the information that they're going to get covers chemistry, covers physics, covers math. I mean, bullies love its math all day. All day, so there's no reason why I could bring a physics teacher, science teacher, or math teacher to this. Um, I mean, even when I get into like building or modifying cars, that's engineering. Uh, so, again, uh, there's, there's really no, there's, there's no limit to where we could bring in, you know, the sciences.
Okay. Um, I think that's definitely something I would be excited to see if this course were approved. Um, the second thing, and you talked about the space, where, can you just tell me on the high school campus where this job?
It's going to be in the Worthcraft Building. So, where?
Where the PAC was.
Yes.
Got it. Um, and I also like that you're talking about community partnerships and friendship opportunities. I definitely get the support of the group or just seeing that happen. Which I think could be really helpful when you're talking about, you know, this as a graduate versus a, you know, experienced technician. If you're building those relationships with community partners, there's going to be more understanding and more opportunity to build those skills.
Yeah.
The two things I'm super, I mean, I'm excited about this, the two things I'm really interested in seeing are cross-curricular opportunities and community partnerships.
We are in discussions as a staff, and not just in automotive, but in all of our CTE programs, where are our opportunities where kids can maybe recover credit? You know, if they've, if they've maybe failed math, and they just need a few components, how can we match a math kid up in building trades and maybe recover some of the math there, so they can get both the building trades and recover a math credit in that class? Um, we are having those, those discussions. I, I don't want to stand here and commit and say that's going to happen next year.
Sure.
Is, so, we're definitely having those conversations.
And I'm not speaking for the whole board, those are two things. I personally am very interested in seeing how different.
I think, I think it's a huge, uh, important add to the CTE world. My shop mechanic says that too. They can't find people just to fill the basic jobs. It's very irrelevant, and it's a gap we have, so it's important.
If I could interject, we, I, the company I worked for, we participated in a program in L.A. in Phoenix called Drag. Drag racing and games, which they went into high schools and did what you're describing there. And actually, one of the high schools, and the high school that was doing it in Phoenix, that, they built two cars for SEMA.
Did they? Which high school was it? Because I, I lived in Phoenix, so I'll have to look into see which, uh, which school that was.
We, uh, along with a couple of other sponsors, we actually provided a new Mustang GT, a Ford Raptor. Did they?
You're talking my language.
And, and I spent some time in the, the shop area with students when I was down in Phoenix, so. Anyone who completed the program, had a job waiting for them, and they got out by one of the, and there was, uh, several local dealerships that had signed on, and they were, they were participating financially in the program. And, uh, you know, of course, they wanted, you know, the students.
Right.
It was the same thing they described. So, and when I first was interviewed to accept a position on the board, that's one of the things I mentioned, was the need to reach out and, and do some of these type programs so that, you know, these students have an opportunity to get out and earn a substantial living and do something that they potentially enjoy, but that, that don't necessarily include, in their view, a four-year college degree.
Yeah, for a lot of the kids that I've dealt with throughout the years, the four-year degree was just, it wasn't tangible, or they couldn't afford it. I was one of those. I put myself through school, and I went through an automotive school, and I got a degree out of it. I was only a small handful of the number of people who went out there. And looking back, you know, did I get something? I, I fast-tracked my career, but was it worth the, the college payment? I've had lots of kids that have come through, uh, just out of high school. They got right into the industry, they, they met with the right people to help them, you know, continue that path. And they did just fine. And even if the kids go on to automotive colleges, this is one of the few industries where you're going to make back your, you have the potential to make back your tuition and your portion of your, whatever. Can't do that as an accountant, can't do that as a doc, as a doctor. But the trades, especially automotive, I mean, I had lots of students that went out and made pretty good money if they were pretty good students. It'd happen, be great, but they just had to have an aptitude and the ability to learn something.
But in this time, can I kind of bring this to a?
No, that's okay. Don't apologize. We're curious.
Uh, can I just beg the possible. No, no, I don't need to apologize. And I'm not. Or is that something you label it in credit for, or is that the, the paid position?
Well, I mean, it really depends on what the shops want to do, I would think. Um, one of the challenges that we have is the timeframe for it, because right now, ninety minutes to teach anything is, especially automotive, that has its own challenges. And that's going to be some new challenges for me to cover, because I'm used to having four-hour classes. But the apprenticeships are going to be there. But the apprenticeships are going to be there. This, I know two shops right now in town, and if I said I got an automotive apprentice, they'd be here right now.
So they have completed the two courses by that time.
The first course is kind of the intro. The second course is to get a little bit of familiarity with actually working on a car. Bringing it in, wrapping it in, you know, taking it down, pulling the wheels off, doing inspections, stuff like that. All the things that a shop would expect an entry-level technician to be able to do. I'm also going to have these guys better conditioned, I should say, better prepared to not just be entry-level. I always liked it when my new students would go into a shop and they'd outclass some of the guys that have been in there for a while. And I thought that was great for their confidence and their drive to continue their careers, so.
As possible, I'd like to talk to you about something I learned at Academy, actually called Z-Space, and maybe you know about it, but another time.
Definitely.
Money. So if this is an additional liability, I think we need to consider what can increase in perhaps insurance premium for district this might have. It might be negligible, but you know, I think that's something we need to investigate. If you have an argument.
I think, I haven't had a conversation yet, but I emailed the second man, the resident person at the insurance company and said, let's talk tomorrow.
That's fine.
She and I are going to talk tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
I did have a question.
Yeah.
Is this budget for just next year for classes one and two, or is it for?
For the most part, it covers all three classes. I am hoping to grow this, again, like I told you, what I want to ask for, what I ask for were two different numbers. But I have a funny feeling that we'll have some pretty good community support with this. So where I was light on cars, because I have next to nothing for budget on cars. I'm hoping that we get donations because we don't have a lot of junkyards nearby and we don't have a lot of used, you know, car wholesalers around here. So I'm praying that we've got some community out for, for our cars. If not, well, then the third course is going to be dependent on me bringing student, or staff cars and. So everybody, raise your hand if you want an oil change, because that's where it's being called out. And again, there's going to be probably some of that too, because I want my students to understand how to talk to a customer. It's not only about the car. You got to know how to talk to people. So, any questions?
Anything else?
Please, I'm ready.
Yes. We have some more. Thanks for putting it together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam, thank you. Am I the right guy? Anybody need anything else or are we willing to support a motion to approve these three new persons? One, you know, pretty significant budget that we had to figure out.
Figure something out and, I guess, support, like I said, for cars. I was expecting sooner or more than this. It's the first time I got the email, there was no budget in that.
Sorry.
That's why I think it's all free.
I think ask for a motion. I'll be happy to propose a motion that we approve in three courses as presented for CD, automotive, robotics, and printmaking. Motion, second.
I'll second it.
In further discussion?
Mrs. Quinn?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Mrs. Schick?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
One more action item before we have executive session. Really brief, Robin put together the policy work we usually do. She did the easy stuff where it's everything that CASB says we should repeal because it's redundant, done somewhere else, not in it. All this CASB causes to review for us and makes that part easier. So we just need to approve repealing all these unnecessary policies.
I will remove that you revealed the policy regulations exhibit as presented.
Motion, second. Motion, second, any further discussion?
Mrs. Quinn?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mrs. Schick?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Motion counts, for all of the junk that's set up. We're now going to move into item 12A, it's an appeal hearing. We will need a motion to go into executive session. We're going to do that as a board, we're going to get organized, we're permitted, and then we're going to provide in the testimony. Parties, information and data. So we could have a motion citing that CRS 24-602, Sarah, go into executive session.
Mr. President, I will move that we go into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, credence C4, credence H, at this time.
Out of 12A.
You need to do that second.
Please. Motion, second. Discussion.
I will do the call now.
Yeah, let's go. Yeah, just do it.
Mrs. Quinn?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Mrs. Schick? Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
All right, so we're going to use that.
You're going to use that and you need to take a chair. We need to, roll the chair.
We all need to take a chair. Um, I, I need.
And take, take a minute. Take a minute. We'll probably write in, we'll just take a second to get organized.
I used to be a teacher, I'm really good at.